I call to order this meeting in the King George County Board of Supervisors. We will open with an invocation invocation from Mr. Collins and the political allegiance by Mr. Miller. Please rise.
Please rise and bow your head, bow your heads, please, in prayer. Dear Lord, we at first ask for forgiveness for our sins as we come forth here, this board. Please allow us to make the decisions that are worthy of you and worthy of our citizens. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Thank you, Mr. Miller. Mr. Miller, do we have any amendments to the agenda?
No, sir.
Okay. In that case, we will move on to public comment. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person in order to afford everyone an opportunity to speak. If comments relate to a specific public hearing item, we ask that you offer those comments at the time of the public hearing. And we do, again, have a number of public hearings this evening. When you do come up, please state your name, your address, and then please provide your comments. So the floor is currently open.
Hello. Good evening. Jonathan Ferrellis, I live at 5006 Pop Castle Drive. Thank you for taking the time to hear me. So basically, the reason why I'm here today is I'm like the other residents in King George County is waiting for Allpoint Broadband to bring files. I've noticed that they were putting down, we've known, me and my neighbors noticed they've been putting down stuff, getting ready for the files, and we also noticed that they actually have skipped our street. When we contacted Allpoint's broadband in reference to it, we were told because our section was built after 2020, that we would not be included in the fiber program and that we would have to wait until the fiber program ends, which I think is ridiculous because our subdivision is pretty much five houses. And we've been, we've been there for over a year now, and like I said, we've, we've been waiting for files. We have kids that go to King George, I have kids that go to King George Elementary, King George Middle School. They do a lot of online work and, you know, this is something that I can't wait, you know, I've been patient and to see them come to my neighborhood, service pretty much everyone around us to prep them and not prep us and to tell us that we're going to have to wait is, is unacceptable. We've even contacted the FCC and our information is on their data, on their website with the FCC. So, you know, Allpoint kind of used that as an excuse, well, it's after 2020 and it's not with FCC, but I could tell you our register, our addresses do come up when you type them in into the FCC database. So any help that the county can give us, we would appreciate it. Thank you.
Do we have anyone else for public comment?
Hi, my name is Anna Maria Lovell. I live in Presidential Eight. I want to thank all of you for your service. I was hoping that you will make good decisions for the county, but on the fifth of September, you approved the data center. I wish that you had waited a little longer so that we'll have a better idea what the downside of this project will be for the county. Two of you are now running for reelection, but you are still part of this county. Does anyone know what the results of dumping heat and water back into the river will be? Mr. Stonehill, you live by the water where mail and power plant by the bridge used to dump cooling water back into the river. Was there any effect on the river? A data center might use a great deal of electric power. Do we know how this will affect the price of electricity for us? Many people of King George are worried about the taxes, the debt. Can you tell the people of King George how much the debt really is? It does not seem like you are doing anything about this problem. This problem has been going for a long, long time.
Mr. Dinesh, do we have anyone online?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Did anyone receive correspondence to be entered into the record? Okay. So, public comment's just about over. I know we just had one more individual come in. So, public comment's still open if there's a desire. All right, then I'm going to close, close public, public comment and move on to reports from members of the board. Ms. Bender.
Thank you very much. Thank you, everybody, for coming out and speaking. For the gentleman from Allpoint's broadband, if you've been watching the meetings, I've been on Allpoint's broadband ever since we signed that. We were supposed to be first and now we're near the last in getting the service. And they were supposed to be here today, but my understanding, Mr. Miller, they are not here today, correct? Allpoint's broadband?
They had requested either a virtual meeting for tonight or to be rescheduled to another night. And in consultation with the chair, Mr. Granger, it was felt that they need to be in person.
I would agree with that, but I just wanted the citizens to know I'm, I'll be reaching out again. Sir, if you can email me your information, I'll find out because I don't have your specific. I am the Shiloh representative, so you can find my email address online. Mike is the problem, one problem, and it is concern with me with they were saying that to you 2020, if your house was built after 2020, because this grant is very specific. And the reason why it can't service everybody in the county is it's only supposed to serve the underserved. And there's some interesting definitions of what is underserved. I was underserved, even though no one will come down my road without paying $50,000 to come down for a line. So the definition is kind of, I think, wrong of what's served and underserved and who can serve you. And it's kind of a little complicated, but I'll, I'll look into that if you just give me your email because I've been having long conversations with Allpoint's broadband about, it's not, not exactly what we signed up for. Maybe there's better solution, but it's the only solution we have now. But I will tell you, if you check your address, Starlink has come into the county, which is Elon Musk's satellite service, and there are some areas that can get Starlink or the T-Mobile. So if anybody out there, if you can't get Allpoint's broadband, those are two options. Now, Mr. Roberts is here from George Washington, ha, Boyle, sorry. Little off on my game today. I was at a basketball game before this, and so I was waiting for the results and I just got it. We had a meeting yesterday and for FAMPO, the Fredericksburg Regional Transportation Authority, was brought up, or the, I forget the acronym for it, but basically it would create a transportation district that would be taxed. And there is talk in the legislature about this year bringing that up again. It's been on the docket for the last two years and unfortunately is probably going to come up again. So we will be talking about that when we talk about the GWRC dues. I did ask just to drop that because I've asked for them to come sometime soon, maybe in December or January, to give a little overview, overview, especially to new board members of what this could mean for King George. And the last thing I want to mention is I know we approved the data center campus, not center, last, last meeting, but one of the things I want to make sure we do before the end of the year in every meeting is to make sure we think of the citizens and not rush into spending money and make sure we have a plan and what our real needs are for this community, not, not just real needs and have a list. We need to come up with a plan because a lot of this money doesn't come until 2027. So we want in that, that window to make sure that we have a good plan and that we are good stewards of the county's money. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Bender. Mr. Collins?
Good evening and thank you for coming. John, I'm sorry, didn't get your last name. Are you on St. Mariah Church Road?
I'm off of Turkey Acres.
Turkey Acres?
Yep.
Okay, because I, so when they come down Igo Road, they stopped right at Mariah, St. Mariah Church Road, whatever that is, and then they picked up on the other side of it. So that lane is not going to be served. And so I called them about the Mariah Church Road and they said, they, after I was on the phone for 90 minutes waiting, they finally said that they weren't going to serve that area, but I didn't know anything about Turkey Acres. Does a line come down Lamb's Creek Church?
Okay, I'm, I'm, we'll give another call and find out what the deal on that one is.
Okay. Ms. Lovell, nice to see you again. When you speak of the price of electricity for data centers, yes, our price of electricity will increase because those things take a lot of electricity and they had to run lines. And so the people that pay, Dominion's going to be the one, then Dominion will raise the price of everybody to serve those centers. As far as your comment, Ms. Lovell, in regards to the data centers and the vote, my, my reasoning for my vote was not because of data centers in general, it was the, the money involved. So we've, we've seen, or you all haven't seen, but we've seen all these different incentives and all these other things that dilute this so much. And so I was more inclined just to do the Birchwood and see how it went instead of just giving a blanket rezoning and, and change the comprehensive plan for the whole kit and caboodle without finding out if they're really going to do what they say. And a big company like Amazon, I don't know if they're going to do what they say. And I don't know what leverage we'll have as a small county. I'm concerned, I'm worried. I don't think the revenues are going to be anything close to their predictions. They're the ones that made the revenue projections. So of course they're going to be as rosy as, as possible. Dawson Boyd, good to see you here. I've asked you to come 18 times and your father made you come tonight. Thank you. Good to see you. Good to see our young people out. And, Mr. Chairman, and I'd like, like consensus to move in one of our closed session items in regards to the, in local incentive for incentive package for a major economic development project for discussion to be removed, removed from the closed session and brought into a discussion item in regular so the folks can hear what these incentives are. I don't think that that fits into the closed meeting because if that, if that is indeed Amazon that is we're speaking of, is that Amazon we're speaking of?
Would be to discuss a performance agreement in regards to what strategy we want to take. So anytime you were to have a public discussion about that, then the people who you are negotiating with also get to hear what you're saying as well. And as you craft your plan, so, you know, that's the motivation for moving into a closed session so they don't get an opportunity to hear it.
Well, the citizens haven't had an opportunity to hear it, and I would like to move that to an open meeting so they can hear it, whether, whatever, our, from my understanding, our negotiating power is zero because we haven't negotiated nothing. So I don't know what difference that would make in regards to that. So is there a consensus to do that?
I am not in favor of that, but I'll let my colleagues speak as well.
My concern, I do have a concern about doing because we haven't planned for it, but we should be socializing this in, in the public. I mean, I will tell you, the other counties are negotiating a little harder than we did, and that has always concerned me that we're not, we're not pushing back.
Mr. Chair, I would hesitate to do so because it says the financial interest of the county would be affected and specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-37118. So just that first one matter, we will be receiving legal advice from our council, so I would not be in favor to have it in the open until we get the legal advice. Thank you.
Mr. Stonehill?
Uh, no.
Okay. So you're all not interested in having that, the public to know what's going on in this county? So you can put anything you want into a closed session. Almost every single thing that we do, we can put into a closed session. And all that does is people talk about transparency, people that are running for office talk about transparency, but I can tell you that we are not being transparent. I'm telling you that for a fact because I'm up here and I know that. So I would hope that maybe the public would stand up on, on these things and, and come forth in large, large numbers and stand up for this because the transparency does not exist on this board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Collins and Mrs. Kupka.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to thank everyone for joining us this evening. Sir, with regard to the broadband project, I do believe it is the case that if your neighborhood did not exist when this grant was submitted, they submitted locations, they submitted addresses in the service area. So if yours was not, if your street was not there at that time, it didn't get submitted. So it likely would not qualify for grant funding, and this is a grant funded project. So when they finish the grant funded portion of the project, they may be able to offer you services at a later date. But I would also echo what Ms. Bender stated. I myself don't have service and about a year and a half ago, did sign up with T-Mobile Home Internet, and it's worked very well for me. We live in the woods and it's very affordable, so I would suggest that you do look into that. Ms. Lovell, thank you as always for coming out and joining us. Just have two brief items. On Saturday, September 16th, I attended the Ralph Bunch Alumni Association meeting. They and the advisory committee are hosting a fundraiser dinner dance on Saturday, September 30th at 6 o'clock PM at the Citizen Center. You can contact a member if you'd like to purchase a ticket for $30. All proceeds benefit the Ralph Bunch High School Museum Fund. And last night, I attended the Department of Social Services Administrative Board meeting. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Kupka. Mr. Stonehill?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thanks for everybody that's come up. John, I didn't get your last name, but again, it's unfortunately, this, this Allpoint broadband has been a great disappointment for a lot of people up here, but we are trying to do what we can. And I will again echo, I have one street over from me, I have friends over there, they have that T-Mobile internet service. They think it's wonderful. It's better than what we have at Breeze Line, so that could be an option for you. Ms. Lovell, thanks for coming out. Hopefully, you know, the approval of what we did will, you know, keep the county going for the next 30, 40 years. It's a, it was a very good thing for the county to move forward. You need to look down the road to the future, just not right here, close in front of you. So hopefully this will work out just fine. And that's all I have, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Stonehill. So I'd like to say thank you to everyone who came out and provided a public comment. Mr. Ferrellis? Please, I said your name wrong. Right, if I was wrong, I apologize. So yeah, I received your email. I did reply. We were supposed to have, Mr. Iain is here tonight. He has, obviously not going to be here, so I apologize for that. I'll let you know when he does show up. I have reached out as well. I've asked your, some questions about whether it'd be possible to have your community or your road included at this point. I have not received any correspondence back from them about it. I will ping them again. It wasn't that I was ignoring you, I just haven't heard back from them yet. So I will continue to ask them and I'll let you know. I can't promise anything, but I will advocate for you. So, Ms. Lovell, again, thank you for coming. I always appreciate you, you coming here and providing your comment. I do think this, this project will be of a great benefit to this community in the long run and be able to meet a lot of our needs coming down as we do look at some of those needs in regards to schools and fire and rescue to be able to fund those, those needs. So I think this will be something that will help us to do that without putting on the burden, that burden upon the taxpayers. So looking to try to address those revenue needs, especially when looking at the landfill and where it's going to be going. I know 19 years is, it sounds like a long time, but it will be here real soon. So trying to address it and provide new revenue streams and allow us to be really picky down the road with other developments that might want to come in. So, but I do appreciate your comments and I do hear what you have to say, so thank you. Other than that, I'd just like to say thank you to Mr. Minor, who did hold the town hall this past Thursday in regards to the incentive zones. I know he's going to give a short brief on it and then we're, I think the plan would be to try to advertise for a public hearing, probably for the next meeting. But I would just like to say thank you to him and all the citizens who came out to provide feedback and to hear what, what it was about. So thank you to all those. And that's all I have. So we move on to approval of the minutes of the consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion properly second. Do we have any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed, chair votes aye, motion carries. We'll move on to constitutional officer reports. I know we have Ms. Hart on the agenda, but she notified us she will not be able to make it. So she did provide some information in regards to the, the revenue for the cigarette taxes. And so I can read it off just so everyone can hear it as well. July 2023 to today, it's a total of $492,960 in total revenue collected and total packs of cigarettes sold in the month of August is $348,019. So if anyone has any questions from Ms. Hart, I'm sure we can send those to her by email or ask staff to, but does anyone have anything particularly like to have staff reach out to Ms. Hart about? Okay. Okay. In that case, I know we have Mr. Jones here as well. So move on to Mr. Jones.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and colleagues. Quickly with our office, we've collected all the taxes for the first half. It's all in the well. Audit was just last week, so that was what was going on. And we're in the process of putting the second half bills out, so the turnaround's really quick. So probably within the next couple of weeks, constituents should be seeing their second half bills, so. I got two reports to give today. First, July, the beginning balance for July was $31,993,150.67. We received $26,568,129.75 and we dispersed $29,766,444.26, leaving an ending balance in the general fund of $28,794,836.16. This figure has not been reconciled to the general ledger just because the audit, well, has been reconciled to the general ledger, but it has not been closed by finance, just because the end of the year FY '23 hasn't been completed, so. Now, in August, just as I said, the beginning balance now was the ending balance, $28,794,836.16. County received $46,42,731.31, dispersed $34,356,158.44, leaving an ending balance of $40,481,409.31 in the general fund. And again, this has been reconciled to the general ledger, but has not been closed by the finance.
Really appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. Miller, could you make sure those figures get added to the minutes? And then, did anyone have any questions for Mr. Jones? Mr. Jones said, thank you so much for coming out and providing the information. I hope the audit's gone well. I see that we're supposed to have the sheriff. Is he online by chance?
I am online, Mr. Chairman.
Awesome. Go for Sheriff Giles.
Due to scheduling conflicts, we were not able to do a inspection for the cigarettes, but one is forthcoming here in the next couple of weeks.
Thank you, Sheriff. Did anyone have any questions for the sheriff while we have him? Okay. Sheriff, I appreciate you being here and we'll look forward to seeing your brief the next time it comes around, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
In that case, we'll move on to the county attorney's report. Ms. Lackey?
Good evening. I'm reporting back on a discussion item that came up a few months ago, which was with regard to possible ways to change the reassessment process due to some lengthy agendas. Mr. Miller and I met with, with Judy Hart and Regina Puckett in July, but I'm just giving this report now due to the length of some recent agendas, as well as the fact that we're not scheduled to have another reassessment just yet. So we had some discussion about recommendations on the possible scope and composition of a reassessment advisory committee. This concept of a reassessment advisory committee is something that King William County did a few years back. They had a similar, had a lot of large concerns with reassessment in a, in a given year. And so they went ahead and established a reassessment advisory committee to get some, some feedback from some knowledgeable folks and some members of the citizens generally to inform that process. So based on the discussion that we had, we identified some county officers or employees that we felt might be good candidates to be part of that prospective committee. So the, the particular staff members that were identified as possible members of, that would be, have valuable contributions to that advisory committee would be the communications and community engagement coordinator and a real, real estate specialist from the commissioner of revenue's office. And then we had some further discussion about qualifications or skills of citizen members that might make good candidates. And the areas of expertise that were discussed were possibly financial or banking experience, real estate or title agency related background, and someone with an agricultural background. So that, that would give you possibly two officers or employees of the county and three citizens with, those would kind of be the, the areas you might be, you might be looking for. You might remember from the prior discussion, as in King William, there was a recommendation that there not be supervisor members of the board because of the taxing authority of the board, as well as with possible disputes that might arise from the assessment process. Similarly, you wouldn't want to have a member of the Board of Equalization serving on the advisory committee. You'd want to make sure that you had folks doing different roles as part of the process. We also discussed possible duties of the advisory committee, stressing it would be advisory only, but potential tasks could include commenting on the draft procurement solicitation for the consulting assessor, possibly also some level of participation with reviewing and evaluating prospective assessors, perhaps not the full committee, but maybe a designee from within the committee. Also, the, the advisory committee could be tasked with some level of quality control to look in at random to spot check some of the work of the assessor while that work is in progress, just to get a sampling of how that, that work is going along. And also, another possible component would be to comment on the actual drafting of public notices and information that's given with regard to the reassessment. Based on the current reassessment schedule, the procurement of a consulting assessor would likely occur next year in 2024. The work would be conducted in 2025 and the effective date of the next real estate assessment would be 2026. So we're still well ahead of the game should you wish to consider a reassessment advisory committee. It was suggested that the committee members serve without pay, that they be appointed after an application or submittal process, and that the commissioner of revenue have the opportunity to review and comment on the candidate pool. And then as an alternative possibly to the reassessment advisory committee, there was a presentation made to the Orange County Board of Supervisors in May about their reassessment process. I'm not familiar with the specific issues that they had with their prior assessments, but they've decided to bring the process in-house. They are projecting to hire between two to four individuals to have an in-house assessor and to move to a two-year reassessment cycle. There's obviously costs associated with that, so that's something you could look at possibly should you wish to during your budget cycle, if you thought there might be a cost benefit to bring that work in-house and also having a more accelerated reassessment cycle so that people might not be quite as surprised with how values change with it, with a longer cycle. So that's, that's the information that I have for you this evening with regard to the possibilities for reassessment advisory committee.
Thank you, Ms. Lackey. I would appreciate the diligence and the thoroughness of the report. If we want to move forward with one of those options, what would be the, the way forward? Like, for instance, if we want to move forward with the committee, what would, what would need to be done in order to step in that direction?
So I could do some drafting. I could also work with Mr. Miller and Ms. Fish on some drafting of applications. So if you wanted, you could form the committee and then make the appointments to committee, or if you wanted to kind of get an idea of who might be interested before you decided if you wanted to establish the committee, you could, you could do it that way as well. so that people might not be quite as surprised with how values change with a longer cycle. So that's the information that I have for you this evening with regard to the possibilities for reassessment advisory committee.
Thank you, Ms. Lackey. I would appreciate the diligence and thoroughness of the report. If we want to move forward with one of those options, what would be the way forward? Like, for instance, if we want to move forward with the committee, what would need to be done in order to step in that direction?
So I could do some drafting. I could also work with Mr. Miller and Ms. Fish on some drafting of applications. So if you wanted, you could form the committee and then make the appointments to committee, or if you wanted to kind of get an idea of who might be interested before you decided if you wanted to establish the committee, you could do it that way as well.
Okay. Do we also have any other questions? Good, Mr. Collins.
Ms. Lackey, so the Board of Equalization, they can do spot checks on the assessments legally, but how would an advisory panel, would they be able legally do spot checks?
So there is certain information that's publicly available. Certainly, if it's a revenue generating property, like a commercial property, there's probably information that would not be available. But I believe a lot of the complaints that were received by this board were from residential homeowners, and a lot of their information is public information.
So they wouldn't do anything with commercial or industrial?
Probably not unless we had any parties that were willing to share that information. But as you mentioned, they also have recourse, of course, to the Board of Equalization. But this would be a way to try and catch errors before the tax, not before the tax rates, before the assessments are established.
I just have a question, another county attorney question. So if anybody has any more questions on this topic, go first.
Not a question. I just would like to see this move forward sooner rather than later.
So are people amenable with having a draft put together by Ms. Lackey and Mr. Miller to present to the board? Okay. So when, okay.
A draft of what are we talking about?
Kind of fine to have a committee.
So a draft of what their duties and responsibilities are?
Of putting it in place, yes.
Not the appointments yet?
No, not yet.
Okay.
Anyone else have anything about this topic? Okay, go ahead, Ms. Bender.
Yes, I just wanted to clarify because I was reached out to by a citizen again. I know we've had a lot in over the summer. Could you just give us an update on the hunting dogs?
Yes, so recently, the Virginia Court of Appeals heard a case that had come out of Henrico. That case was a challenge to the statutory right to retrieve hunting dogs from private property. The challenge was that that was a taking of private property. But the Court of Appeals had dismissed that case. So the current status, to my knowledge, of that case is not moving forward unless it's been appealed to the Virginia Supreme Court. But that does limit the recourse to the particular citizen who was asking the question if the county could adopt a local ordinance. So no, we cannot, we cannot adopt anything contrary to state law, and at this point in time, the state law has been upheld.
All right, thank you just for that clarification.
Mr. Chairman, I ask a question. Ma'am, we, earlier in the year, maybe the end of 2022, requested a review of the noise ordinance, and this is separate from the community standards that are part of the zoning ordinance revision that is ongoing right now with the planning commission. And if I remember correctly, you formed a working group? Can you give us an update on what the status is of the noise ordinance update, the formal noise ordinance in the administrative code that the sheriff's office has the authority to enforce?
So I worked at, worked out, looking at possible changes. And so you all received a confidential draft of proposed changes, but no, those have not yet been vetted through the sheriff's department, if that's something that the board wished for me to do.
Can I ask for consensus of the board to do so, please? Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Ms. Lackey. We'll move on to Mr. Chip Boils with the GWRC.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, supervisors, Mr. Miller. Appreciate you having me tonight. Again, I'm Chip Boils, the executive director for the George Washington Regional Commission. And I have with me tonight Kate Gibson, the deputy director at GWRC. We've been asked, our board members, of which your two representatives are Ms. Cupka and Ms. Bender, along with the other four jurisdictions, that to, to present to all of the jurisdictions a proposed per capita rate increase that we are recommending for the fiscal year 25 budget. Seems like we just got through with fiscal year 24, but anyway, we're already working on FY25. And this year is a little bit unique. I will walk through a few slides, but there's opportunities for additional grant monies that we no longer have the match available to use to pursue those grants. We haven't raised our per capita rates to our local governments since 2009. So it's been a number of years. We do see increases as the population goes up, but what we're finding as the grant monies available to our region is outpacing those population increases. So we have slowly kind of spent our way out of having available match money. We receive funding from our local jurisdictions, of course, our member governments or King George County, Caroline County, Stafford, Spotsylvania, and City of Fredericksburg. And by charter and by state law, we receive direct funding from our local governments based on your population. That population changes every year with the Weldon Cooper at University of Virginia, their annual estimates. See if I can stay on track here. As I said, GWRC uses your per capita rates to match the grants that we receive for the region. Every PDC, of which there are 21 across the Commonwealth, they use their match funds and their per capita funds a little bit differently. Some do it to fund specific projects. It's been GWRC's practice for many years to use ours to match additional funds coming from state or federal agencies. If you look at fiscal year 24, we received just over $250,000 in local funds that generated almost $1.4 million in state and federal grants for those direct matched grants. If you look at the grant programs that we administer, like the Go Virginia program, which we've been very active with King George County, we receive $307,000 match money, but generate nearly $8 million worth of grants through those programs. So a 26 to one return on investment there. The match money to go after these grants is very, very important, twofold. You know, one, just for availability, but the second, with the per capita funding from our local governments, it allows us to make the commitments at the time the grants become available, rather than the time it would take to go to every local government and get on the agendas and get the match money approved. And then the third thing that happens there is if it's a regional grant and four jurisdictions approve it and one doesn't, then how do we move it forward when it can't be subdivided among the jurisdictions? So these are the numbers. This is the impact that these grants have on our region and why it's so important to us to have those available match funds. We've recently received notice, and really while we're here at the last minute before you, and we're not asking for a decision, what we are asking you is to just give direction to Ms. Bender and Ms. Cupka, because they will be asked to vote on this rate increase at the GWRC level. It comes back to you when you're considering your FY25 budget. So it'll be the new Board of Supervisors that'll be considering, you know, your approval of our budget. At this point, we have to know what we can ask for by October 23rd. But the importance that we have and the urgency is VDOT is just telling us now what some of the new grants available to our region will be for FY25, and it's a substantial increase. So much so that if we get the grant increases without the match increases, we won't have enough money to take advantage of the full grants. That's the concerns for us. And what we're going to be proposing, I'll show you in just a second, we feel we'll be able to cover those matches in a fairly equitable and cost efficient manner, especially for King George County and Caroline County, our two most rural counties. So jump ahead. This is just to show you, this is what our rate increase or our rates have been since 2008. We proposed an increase in 2009, but that was when the nation was in an economic crisis, and we withdrew that request. And so we've been constant since 2009 at a 64 cent rate up until FY24. What we're proposing for FY25 is a 15% increase to roughly 74 cents per person. This shows what, at that 64 cent rate, our local contributions have been for all five jurisdictions. So, and those increases have been based solely on population increases, not rate increases. What you'll notice is even with a 15% increase to the per capita, the local contributions will not increase from FY24 to FY25. We're doing that by eliminating one of the funding requests that we have submitted to you previously, which was to help the GWRC get into a better financial position and create a reserve or a savings account. We feel like we're in a good enough position right now. We don't need to ask you to keep funding that account. What we'll rely on is good stewardship of your money, and any savings at the end of a fiscal year, we can then use that into the reserve account. And if there aren't any savings, then we just continue moving forward as we always have. As you can see from this, for King George, what this 15% increase would equate to is a $6 increase in your funding between FY24 and 25. So we feel it's pretty fair. The jurisdictions that would see the real increases would be Spotsylvania and Stafford because of their population differences. As I said, the recommendation that our staff will be making to our board is to increase our rate from 64 cents to 74 cents. It gives us the chance to increase our match availability. It also allows us to eliminate that fund balance request that we've been making of each of you. And I will say, one of the things for me, it creates more of an equity. We have years that you all have funded the fund balance, but not everybody else has. And by the time the budgets are passed, there's no real way to go back and try to equal that out among the jurisdictions. So we've just lived with it. We would no longer have that equity problem. Everybody would be paying through the per capital rate, so. I think I've covered most of this already. One of the questions we hear from our members all the time, well, if our rate is going to be 74 cents, what are the other PDC rates? So we looked at some of the peers that are close to us in size. I can tell you, planning district commissions, they're more varied than the local governments are. You were talking about your cigarette tax earlier tonight. The Thomas Jefferson Planning District in Charlottesville, they run a regional cigarette tax program. Our annual budget is about $8 million a year. Their annual budget is 40 to 50 million dollars a year. So everyone's different. The Lynchburg PDC runs a regional landfill. So everyone is different, which makes our per capita rates different. But you can see, even with that, we're one of the lowest ones for PDCs that are near our size. What you will find is the smaller the PDC, usually the higher the per capita rate, because they don't have the population within their region. Next, we just ask you to talk to Ms. Cupka and Ms. Bender if you have any thoughts. We'll be asking them at Monday night's commission meeting for the approval to be able to submit this rate to you on October 23rd to be considered in your FY25 budget. And I'll be glad to answer questions tonight or come back anytime you'd like. And as Ms. Bender said, we'll be back in December or so when the new board is in place, just to introduce what we do more with GWRC and some of the ongoing programs. But I'd be glad to answer any questions tonight, or Kate can certainly answer some if I can.
Thank you, Mr. Boils.
Thank you.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Boils? I'll start with Mr. Stonehill.
Thank you, Mr. Boils, for coming out. Could you just briefly, we all up here know what GWRC, could you briefly tell the public? We also have some supervisor candidates in the audience as well, just to give them the quick little, you know, nutshell about what GWRC does.
Certainly, and thanks for that opportunity, and I'll try my best to make it as quick as possible. The George Washington Regional Commission is one of 21 regional planning commissions in the Commonwealth of Virginia. This is a national effort begun in the late 60s, early 70s to, really, it was, all PDCs were created to force local governments to begin to plan to use federal money. What I try to explain to people in the simplest of terms is that if King George and Caroline County were not talking to each other about a road improvement project, one of you may be building a road here and the other one here, and they wouldn't touch when you completed them. That's oversimplifying it, but that's still the concept of why PDCs are in place. They were also created to, especially for rural jurisdictions, that may not have the resources to have planning staff, planning equipment. Back in those days, it was even having computers, GIS types of services. And so that a regional entity could provide those services for five, six, 12 jurisdictions, rather than each one trying to do it themselves. Today, we provide both those individual services to local governments, but predominantly, it's more regional, and almost every PDC in Virginia, one of their biggest services is in transportation planning. For us, we help King George and Caroline with smart scale applications for transportation improvements. We work with safety transportation improvements, regional transit improvements. We also work with Mr. Minor very closely. We house the Go Virginia program for our region. So we provide the administration for all of the economic development grants there, housing and homelessness. We provide planning services. We do a lot of facilitation and cooperative efforts, and we really don't implement hardly anything, you know? We have no powers to pass ordinances, condemn property, pass taxes. We rely on our local governments, and it's our board. Our board is made up of 10 elected officials, two from each of the five jurisdictions. They give the staff the direction of what's important. And so we follow that lead, and if they tell us looking for broadband grants or environmental types of grants or transportation, that's what we go after. So we let our board kind of direct us. I hope that gives it. I could go on for a long time. We do a lot of different areas.
Okay, great. I just, you know, you were talking about grants and money and all that kind of stuff, so I just wanted to make sure that that little briefed description got out. But thank you, and thank you for the presentation.
Ms. Cupka, you said you had a question?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, yes. Mr. Boils, thank you very much for coming out this evening and sharing this with us. So even though the per capita contribution would increase from about 64 cents to 74 cents, the bottom line for our community, our contribution, when we added the fiscal year 24 per capita contributions and the fiscal year 24 other contributions, the total was $20,454. And now you're asking, you will be asking for fiscal year 25, $20,460.
Yes, ma'am.
So the bottom line is $6.
Yes, ma'am.
Period. Not $6 per person, just so everybody understands.
Six dollars.
Flat $6.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Bender?
Thank you very much for coming and explaining. I thought it was very important. We mentioned this last night, especially since we'll have quite a few new members on the board, so that would people understand what GWRC does. But brought up last night at the FAMPO meeting, the VDOT and the costs for transportation improvements, that is one reason why these matching funds are needed, because it, in the future, we might be asked to contribute more to these grants. And for the public that doesn't understand is, you know, smart scale road improvements, this is where a lot of the money comes from and the ability. We don't have a transportation planner. We're just a small locality. Other people do, we don't. So we use GWRC to help us apply for these grants. Could you explain what I was attempting to explain about the Regional Transportation Authority?
I'll be glad to. If I could back up, just because I want to be with both the the Board of Supervisors and the public, the per capita rate, you're exactly right, is $6. One of the additional services we provide is that we are the facilitator for other agencies and the fiscal agent. So for instance, the Ravano River Basin Commission is a separate commission that operates through the the GWRC. We make requests on their behalf. We make requests for the continuum of care homelessness. That's not the GWRC's request. This is another body. So while you may see more than the $6, it's not the GWRC asking for it. I just wanted to make sure that, especially for the staff, when they see something come in, it may be one of those other entities, if that makes.
So you just said, though, the per capita rate is $6. You meant the flat increase is $6, not the per capita.
Total per capita, not the rate, the the total per capita contribution, $6.
Thank you.
Yes, $6. The, what Ms. Bender is discussing is that one of the things that's been, smart scale, in in my opinion, I've been working with it in Virginia, just a different location since it's been in effect, has been a very good move for VDOT, making the funding of transportation improvements a lot more equitable and probably a little bit less politically driven. But what it does happen is it's competitive. And so for a road project in King George, you're competing on a scoring basis with projects within our region, as well as if it's a big project throughout the entire Commonwealth. And one of the largest scoring points is how much match you can contribute to a project. If the state has to fund 100% of a big project, you're not going to score well, and a lot more times than not, you will not get that funding. So having a mechanism in place that you can provide a match to the smart scale projects is really important. Spotsylvania County approved a bond referendum, if I'm not mistaken, or some type of taxing mechanism recently, that is designated strictly for transportation improvements, so that they can match these smart scale applications. Northern Virginia, Hampton Roads, they and Richmond, they all have regional transportation authorities with their own taxing structure, that they can take those local dollars and match smart scale and get hu, you know, they'll score very, very well on return on investment for the smart scale projects. We don't have that in our region. And so what the FAMPO board asked to, and also because FAMPO was is by statute, City of Fredericksburg, Spotsylvania, and Stafford County, was to include Caroline and King George and look at a regional transportation authority with its own taxing authority, so that funds could be generated and saved and utilized to match larger projects or to have money available for smaller projects and not even have to try to go to smart scale to get the additional funding. Fund a smaller scale project 100% through that authority. This legislation is has been presented to the General Assembly over the last several years. This past year, it was one vote in the Senate from from moving forward. We anticipate that it'll go forward again, and it's gone forward without any conversation of the George Washington region or the the FAMPO region. Unless some of you tell us you were aware of it, we're not aware of any elected official in our region that knew that legislation was being presented. FAMPO board last night asked us as a staff to look at it and try to head that off this year and develop our own concept in what would we think the ideal regional transportation authority looked like, so that if the General Assembly gets another bill, we have something to say, wait a minute, here's one we've already worked on. And so that's what staff's moving forward with now, is putting that together. Does that tell enough? I mean, it's 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 very complicated. General Assembly has to pa, I mean, that's the only place it can be passed to create this authority. But right now, we are, as as Mr. Oles said last night at FAMPO, we're the donut hole. Northern Virginia has one, and Richmond has one, and the only thing in between those two transportation authorities is our region. And so with I-95, that corridor, with the the corridor running through King George, it would make a very logical place if the money would would pan out and it it could afford to generate the revenue that would be needed.
I appreciate you explaining that, because I wanted to warn, and we do have candidates in the audience, because the people need to know is, we didn't have a say in this legislation being, and if I remember right, Mr. Pike, correct?
McPike.
McPike did it, and he's not even, I think he represents a little bit of Stafford, correct? And so they're making these decisions on our behalf, and we didn't even know. So it is good, because it could pass this time.
It could. And and I don't want to say, I mean, there were some very good elements and and our opinion in it. It was not that it was just a terrible piece of legislation, but it didn't fully fit our needs, and it just didn't have any of our input at all, good or for bad.
Mr. Chair, may I add, so just to clarify something that you said, we did know this was happening in the General Assembly both years. We were not consulted. We were not consulted by either the delegate Cole a couple of years ago from Stafford County, who tried to do so in 2020, and and Senator McPike, who tried to do so last year. We were never consulted about this. It's, to my knowledge, none of the elected officials that are members of GWRC or FAMPO were. But we did track it, and we did the last two years. Our locality sent a letter in opposition to the General Assembly. But this is not something that we asked them to do for us, and these are people who frankly don't, at least this body here, this community, don't represent us. So yes, in that regard, you are absolutely correct. Thank you.
All right. Appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you again.
I believe we have Mr. Chris Clark to give us an after action on the independent celebration.
They all look the same now. Nope, not that one. Well, good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Tonight, our rise for two purposes, to discuss the independent celebration. First is to provide the necessary after action report, since it was a TAC-funded item. And the second is to start discussion of the 2024 event and seek authorization to submit an RFP so we can secure a fireworks vendor. This year, we are at Sealston Sports Complex again on Saturday, July 8th. The event ran from 7:00 PM to 10:00 PM. We had over 650 cars on site by estimate, estimating 3.6 spectators per car, get us to a total of somewhere over 2,300 people on site. We also learned from the King George Sheriff's Office that Sealston Deli's parking lot was completely full, including the the King George Truck and Tire. And there were also cars at Sealston Automotive, the Nappo Service Center. So probably, who knows, could have been over 1,000 cars. One of the reasons we got the count of 650 is we did mark the grass this year using our painting robot. So it is, it allows us, allowed us to have actual spaces, 10-foot spaces, 10-foot by 19 spaces. So we didn't have to have, we didn't have to put staff on the field this year to park cars, because it was labeled where to go, just like a parking lot. And it, in the end, we not only did we use every space that we marked, but we ended up putting cars on the Sealston left baseball field, which would be on that front side, the Fletcher Chapel side of the school. I learned that when my, one of the staff members came back with the card at the end of the night, and he had bases in it. And I said, why do you have bases? And he says, because we've parked cars on the baseball field. And I'm like, okay, that means there really were a lot of people here. So very good event for us. Our entertainment this year was Glenn Shelton, who's a, he's from Appomattox County, has hit many, many fairs and festivals and was very well received. American Fireworks Company did an outstanding job as usual. We had a face painter, Bubble and Glow Choice for sale, and Jazz in the Country was there promoting their event. Marketing wise, we did seven pre-event Facebook posts between my department and community engagement. We had the event listed on Facebook and as an event on Facebook and on Eventbrite. Miss Southall did a Twitter post for us in advance. And then after the event, between the two of us, there were 10 post-event social media posts. And then we, Parks and Recreation has started a new newsletter called Gateway to Play, and actually, July was our first issue, and that went out the week of the event and included information on it. So our total pre-event reach was almost 49,000, and post-event almost 4,000. This year, we were budgeted $40,000 from the Tourism Fund. We spent $31,011.93 from that fund, and spent $250.48 from the Recreation Activity Fund, rather than try to code over park, parking rec, recades that worked the event and the small $61 that we bought to have drinks, Gatorades, waters for the band and the staff that were working. Just, those were easier just to put through my account, but the rest of it did come through Tourism. But our total cost for the event was $31,262.41. We did collect $475 in revenue. We don't charge a lot. We charge $100 right now for the food vendors and $25 for the other vendors by definition. So because it's only a two-hour event, it's hard to go any higher than that, I would think, and not drive off vendors, although they all do very well. So the net cost to the county was $30,787.41. Dividing that by the 2,340 spectators, which is probably a minimum number, costs $13.05. To go to a movie in Fredericksburg, it's either $14 or $15, depending on which side of Route 3 you go to. So pretty good bang for our buck, I think. But obviously, there are still awesome places to improve. Our event partners, the King George VFW, Sergeant Nicholas C. Mason, post 12202, served as, they opened the concession stand and did small items. And then county departments and offices, obviously, the Sheriff's Office, Fire Rescue Emergency Services, Community Development, as we get, have to get our, excuse me, the stage approved. Rick actually came out on Saturday morning to inspect the stage. Obviously, Miss Southall and Community Engagement was a huge help this year, especially as the afternoon looked rainy. When I was at the event and our staff was at the event working on setup, she was on social media, answering all the questions and appeasing everybody that, yes, we are still on a schedule, and it doesn't look like it's going to be raining after 7 o'clock. So that was a huge help. Economic Development, Tourism is always there to support us. Finance, obviously, the, a couple of the things we have to, we pay on sites, we have to get checks cut early, and the County Attorney's Office for reviewing all of our contracts. Our room to improve looking next year, first of all, the map there, Miss Southall did that for us, and we sent that out both in the newsletter and on a Twitter and Facebook post, and I think was very informative to the public. I'm not sure which program she did that in, but it's not a skill I had. I draw on screenshots from GIS. So the fact that she did that for us was huge. It was a very big help. Going forward into 2024, we are currently seeking that part-time event coordinator that was approved in the budget. If we stay at Sealston, we are going to have to figure out increased parking capacity and where else we can put cars. And in that, possibly adding shuttles, it is a long walk if you're all the way out there at Fletcher Chapel Road on that front soccer field. And whether we try to partner up with some folks or rent two little golf carts or something, because our, our vehicle is only two seats. So we can get the disabled grandmother, but we can't get the rest of the family, who's also very far away, and just try to figure out a way to do that better. Obviously, we need, we need additional food vendors. The reaction from everybody is, you know, one of the places, there wasn't enough food, and they sold out. Well, good for the food vendors, they sold out, they're very happy. Actually, one of the vendors that we acquired wrote me Friday afternoon. He signed his contract Friday night, and I took his payment Friday night. He showed up. He finished after two hours and came up to me and said, I want to be on this event every year. And he had had an event that actually had canceled on Friday before Saturday, and that's why he was available to us. Obviously, with kids, we need additional craft or entertainment things going on as well. And that's, that's two of the big things that the event coordinator is going to be able to work on for us. And then also sponsorships to try to offset more of the costs, so that it is not as much of a burden on the county stores and fund. So for 2024, we have been looking at some options. We met with NSF Dahlgren, Ms. Hayes, and other folks from her office. They would prefer us, if we were to work with them, to use July 13th. We were hoping that, because we've been the Saturday after the 4th for the last three years, that it should be July 6th. So that would be a discussion if we were to do it at Dahlgren. One of the items that they discussed, though, is it wouldn't be like it was in 2012 and prior. They would want to hold the entire event on the runway, so there would be not as many activities there. It would be, there'd be a lot to work out, and it wouldn't be as, wouldn't be the old way, if you've lived here forever and know, you started on the parade grounds, and there was a concert, and then you walked over to their softball field and watched the fireworks. So it would be very different in that way. There are still the security issues as well. And a lot of that is, I think, is partially why they want to push to the 13th, is they have staff working overtime with their own July 4th event, and then would have another event right behind it, because they do a a middle-of-the-day event, not a fireworks event. Another option that we started to talk about was possibly partnering with the Gateway Shopping Center in either launching the fireworks from the base or some other property that the county owns in that region. Mr. Minor, I've just kind of scratched the surface on that. And it would be very different, would put us in an area where we would see some, hopefully see some business aspects on the tourism side, which we don't get up at Sealston, because we are in the agricultural section of the county. Or the third option would be to go back to Sealston and do the event there. So for tonight, I'm looking, really looking for the RFP approval, so we got, so we can go out and and start the RFP process, because the sooner we get on it, the more likely we are to be able to secure a quality vendor. And fireworks technicians are in high demand. There have, over the last two years, there have been major localities in our region who have moved their events to other days or had to cancel in their entirety. And then we would seek the $40,000 in tourism funding overall in the budget request for next year.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. I'm going to ask, so it was approved from the Tourism Fund, $40,000, and you spent about $30,000. Can I assume that the the other funds were sent back to the Tourism Fund balance?
Yes. So as, what's different than like a Jazz in the Country or different aspects here, where we cut, I think, the way I understand it, they kind of catch them a check for the full amount, and they spend it. I actually bill directly to the account number, so.
So you were billing straight to the fund balance?
Yeah, I never saw $40,000. I just submit every check to finance, and they cut it from that account.
Okay. Mr. Collins?
Yes, sir. Mr. Clark, how much sales tax was generated from the vendors and food folks?
I do not have that number. That would be with the Commissioner revenue.
Could you come up, could you find out what that number is?
Yes, sir. I will do that, and I'll send it to Mr. Miller, and he can forward it to you.
I do agree with you, especially with the food trucks. I I mean, I heard maybe one complaint about the amount of cost for fireworks, but everyone I've spoken to, they love the event, they just wish we had more food vendors, because there was long lines. And it's a great event. I think it, it makes a lot of people happy in the county, and sometimes you need to make people happy, you know what I mean? And it is a beautiful show. But getting some more vendors and and maybe taking some burden off of the Tourism Fund would be a a good step.
Any other questions? So you're also asking for appropriation, so, but you haven't submitted a Tourism?
So I did make this exact same report to TAC, and they did have consensus that it was, we were good to go on their end.
And I'll just ask Mr. Minor, is is staff in agreement with that request from, and the recommendation from the TAC?
Put you on the spot earlier. All right. How you doing, Chairman? So I can't remember exactly, did they approve, was it 30,000 for the, from the TAC fund? So I can't remember exactly, did they approve, was it 30,000 for the, from the TAC fund?
They bounced it around and all, they were talking about possibly increasing the show. When we did the 300th anniversary show, we did a $30,000 show that was nearly 30 minutes long. And I was bored by the end, so I can only imagine where the five and six-year-old boys were. So it was just, actually to say a fireworks show could be too long, that was really what it was, is it became too long. So if we stay at the $25,000 number, I feel very comfortable.
Okay. So you, you're not asking for the full fund at the moment, you're asking for enough from the tourism fund balance to move forward with the RFP for the show at least?
Yes.
And whether that will be at Sealstone or at the Gateway Shopping Center or at Dahlgren, that would be the show that would go at one of those locations?
Correct, yes. So we just need to be getting on that process so we have a vendor in hand and we don't end up with a not, you know, somebody who maybe isn't as qualified.
Understood. And Mr. Collins, you have another question?
So it's 30,000 from the tourism fund, 25,000, 55,000 total?
No, sir, they're, they're one budget.
What's the total? 40,000?
That's, that's his request. 25,000 of it is for the actual fireworks show, which is what Mr. Clark is asking for tonight in order to move forward with the RFP process to secure the fireworks vendor. I would, he would then come back and we could, the board can make a decision on, on the rest of the expenses and whether to take that from the tourism fund or how to, to move forward with that activity. But his request right now is just for moving forward with the RFP, which was the 25,000 to request from the tourism fund balance.
So 25,000, how much did the fireworks vendor cost last year?
It's, they've been 25,000 cents. You shop it, kind of, you tell them your amount and then they give you their best show package. They send you a bid with the best thing they can give. And we have to weigh, come up with a way to measure those based on how many five-inch shells or four-inch shells, three-inch shells, kind of thing. And what, what's the best bang for your buck? It's different than how you purchase most things.
So I would, I would be inclined to keep it at Sealstone, not down in Gateway. Seemed to be too confusing down there. It's kind of a one-stop shop at Sealstone. That would be my suggestion and wish.
Does, how does everyone else feel about the, the RFP request, though, for the 25,000 from the tourism fund?
So do we have to specify a location at this time or just for your purposes of issuing your RFP to secure a vendor?
So there will be, there may be, like, if we were to use the Gateway Shopping Center, it would, the show would need to be a little different, those ground.
It would impact.
The thing they would have to change. So we will have to spell out in the RFP that these are the three possibilities unless I can narrow it down further with Ms. Hayes and the base before then. Because this is a kind of request that not only does the captain here have to approve, but it's got to go all the way up to Washington to the Admiral.
Go ahead, Mrs. Bender.
Well, I would make a suggestion that we approve it with a location, since I think a lot of us think to stay at Sealstone would be a, because that would help you out, correct?
Yes.
And, and from my understanding, since we've been doing this for three years now, to find a vendor that's a very safe and reliable vendor, you have to lock them in quite a bit early because they are in high demand because there are very few of them in the world, correct?
Yes. And that's one of the reasons why we are the Saturday after, that our same vendor this year shot Spasylvania on the Saturday before the 4th, shot Fredericksburg on the 4th, and shot us then on the 8th. And in addition to doing other shows on the other nights.
So I'd be interested in just seeing how it possibly could look like at the Gateway Shopping Center or at Dahlgren. I'm just kind of curious to know what, what that would be. I do know there is challenges with, you know, obviously, as you brought up with parking and, and transportation. Not that Sealstone isn't a good location, but it, you know, it does have some challenges. And some of those other areas might have more vendor availability just because they're in a more commercial area. So I'd be kind of curious to see how it could look, but I'll leave to my colleagues to make that decision.
I would be inclined to keep it at Sealstone. I've talked to base at great lengths about the fireworks as too. I, I think that's going to be just too much for them to handle. And also with the security issues, they, they would love to do it, but every time we've talked about it, it always, it's probably a no. In 301, the Gateway Shopping Center, that's a tough place to navigate in broad daylight, much less at nighttime with a whole bunch of people. So I, I just think, you know, it's, granted, Sealstone's out in the middle of nowhere, but it's, it's very easy, it's very open. You can see it from a lot of different places, from Sealstone Deli, from the truck stop. Me personally, I would be inclined to leave it there.
Okay. It sounds like we have the majority of the board that would like to see it in that. So then I'll ask as well about the, the request for the RFP. So we would have to give approval, or at least that's what Mr. Clark's asking for, for him to move forward with that. So it would be, I guess, a motion to fund $25,000 other request from the tourism fund balance for a fireworks RFP.
Mr. Chair, then I have a motion to approve $25,000 from the tourism fund for the fireworks vendor.
Is that from the fund or the fund balance?
Mr. Miner?
He would refer fund balance.
Fund balance.
Friendly amendment, fund balance.
Or? Yes.
I'll second to make it official.
Okay. We have a motion, probably second. And so it is also, that included the amendment to be from the fund balance. So $25,000 from the tourism fund balance for moving forward with the fireworks RFP. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Okay. We do have a couple of public hearings tonight, so we'll start with the first. King George County Board of Supervisors will now hold a public hearing that has been properly advertised, receive public input regarding proration of personal property taxes. I will first ask for the staff report. I will then open the floor for public comment. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker. In order to afford everyone an opportunity to speak, please state your name and address before you comment. Upon completion of the public comment, I will bring the matter back to the board for consideration. The board, the board may or may not take action tonight depending on the information received during the public comment. So we will start with Ms. Lackey. I believe it's you with the staff report.
So this proposed draft ordinance is in substantially the same form as was presented on August 1st. Currently, the owners of motor vehicles, trailers, semi-trailers or boats, they owe taxes for the calendar year as of January 1. So if you are the vehicle owner as of January 1, you owe your taxes to King George County. There is an, an option under state law that you can prorate taxes. So if somebody moves out of jurisdiction, then they only owe taxes for the portion of the year that they had that vehicle garaged in King George County, and then they would owe taxes to the new jurisdiction. So if, if somebody were to leave King George mid-year, they would have taxes refunded for the months that they have paid rounded by half of month for those months in which they no longer reside in King George County. It would exercise the optional provision that would exclude the proration of boats, vehicles, trailers and semi-trailers with a gross weight of 10,000 pounds or more used for hire by a motor carrier engaged of interstate commerce. So that's one way to kind of prevent some of the lost revenue is that those large vehicles in interstate commerce would still have their taxes due as of January 1st in full. And the proposed effective date would be January 1st of 2024.
Do we have any questions for Ms. Lackey about the presentation? Okay. Then I will open the floor for public comment upon this public hearing. So if anyone would like to provide public comment, the floor is open. Mr. Dines, do you have anyone online?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Did anyone receive correspondence to be entered into the record in regards to this public hearing? Okay. Then I will close the floor for public comment for this public hearing, and I will bring it back to the board for discussion and consideration.
So, Mr. Chair, if I may, just to give a little background, I brought this forward to the board because currently we do not prorate and we are out of the surrounding localities. I believe the only locality that does not prorate, the code does allow us to do so, but we must adopt a local ordinance in order to do so. So the benefit here is, well, first of all, if you own a vehicle, if you buy a vehicle after January 1, here in King George, you don't start paying taxes on it until the following calendar year. So it would allow the locality to, to collect personal property tax at what one might assume be when the vehicle has a higher value. But, and why I brought this forward is because at the end, when you sell the vehicle, I received a great many number of complaints from constituents who were selling vehicles after January 1 and were still being taxed for the entire calendar year by our locality, even though they no longer own the vehicle and even though the vehicle is no longer garaged in King George County. So to me, it seemed like it was a bit unfair for people to be paying for taxes on vehicles that they no longer own and that King George should not be collecting taxes on vehicles that are no longer garaged in our county. So that's where I was coming from when I brought this forward to the board, and I appreciate everyone on the board's support to bring it to this point for a public hearing. Thank you very much.
I even want to add to Ms. Cup, because if you move out of the state, you're still being taxed for the rest of the calendar year. So that's another thing, is to be a little more equitable and fair to collect the taxes and to not pay the taxes if you sell the vehicle or move away.
Any other discussion or comments?
Mr. Chair, a motion. I move adoption of an ordinance to enact a new section in Chapter 14 Taxation, Article 1 of the King George County Code to implement the proration of personal property taxes on motor vehicles. Standby. Let me rescind that. Ms. Lackey, your advice during the, or your comment during the board report, you said boats are optional?
Yes, that's correct.
And, but it is included as written here?
Yes.
It is included, okay. And so let me just ask, is everyone okay with boats being included before I read the whole thing? Yes? Okay. Thank you very much. Thanks for the indulgence. Am I able to revisit the motion or does someone else have to do it?
Why don't we have someone else do it?
Thank you.
If there's a, a will of the board.
Just go ahead and help me a second. Which page is it on?
210.
10.
210 of the PDF. So I'll, I'll make a suggestion. If someone would like to make a motion to adopt an ordinance to enact a new section in Chapter 14 Taxation, Article 1 of the King George County Code to implement the proration of personal property taxes on motor vehicles, trailers, semi-trailers and boats as presented? If someone would like?
So moved.
We have a motion?
Second.
Okay. A motion, probably second. Any further discussion? Apologize for the, the confusion there. I was just trying to provide the, the language so that it could just be moved upon. Was there any discussion? All right. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you. We'll move on to our second public hearing. King George County Board of Supervisors will now hold a public hearing that has been properly advertised, receive public input regarding the repeal, to repeal the vehicle license tax. I will first ask for the staff report. I will then open the floor for public comment. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker. In order to afford everyone an opportunity to speak, please state your name and address before you comment. Upon completion of the public comment, I will bring the matter back to the board for consideration. The board may or may not take action tonight depending on the information received during public comment. I believe Ms. Lackey again will have the staff presentation for this.
Yes, I do, Mr. Chair. So once again, this is a proposed draft ordinance in substantially the same form as last presented on August 1st. If it is to be implemented, the license tax on vehicles would be repealed as of January 1st, 2024. The county could still pursue overdue license taxes prior to that date. There is a little bit of a quirk in that the way the, the funds are budgeted, the entire year's worth of license tax is budgeted for the second half of fiscal year 2024. So there would need to be some way to fill in a revenue loss of $700,000. Also, perhaps a minor point, but the county would still need to actually issue some form of decal for use of convenience centers based on the language and a different part of the county code that provides for decals in Section 1330. So that's not an obstacle to adoption, it's just a note that there still would be some, some kind of, of decal continued to be issued.
Do you have any questions for Ms. Lackey? Go ahead, Ms. Bender.
So with the decal, could we do it the same way we do now? You just, you're not paying a fee, so they would have to be required to go to Commissioner of Revenue and get the decal?
Correct. They just have to meet the criteria for having solid waste processed, and then they, they could have a decal issued.
All right, thank you.
So Ms. Lackey, you're saying that the $25 collected for the vehicles amounts to $700,000 in revenue?
Yes, that's, that's the information that I received from finance.
And so without that, we'll be, we'll have a $700,000 to make up every year?
It was, it was budgeted for, so the, the budget you were adopted is anticipating that revenue.
Is that budgeted for the whole fiscal year or just the half?
Perhaps Ms. Han can address that as well.
Because my other question with that too is, so the next budget cycle, we can make sure that we account for that. So this is just covering that small portion of time.
Yes, so I welcome Mrs. Han to, to interject, but as I understand it, the way the payments fall, they are all, they all fall in the second half of the fiscal year. So there wouldn't be the opportunity to correct the, that you could address it in future years, but it would all fall in the second half of the current fiscal year.
So each penny on the tax dollars, what, 250-some thousand now? Is that what it?
Real estate, I believe, each penny is about 390,000?
390?
Mm-hmm.
So how much more would have to be made up in the personal property for the, in the tax percent for the 700,000?
For personal property? I'm not sure how much each penny in personal property generates. Ms. Han, do you know that off the top of your head? I, I don't recall. I know it's significantly less than real estate.
Significantly more.
Personal property?
Yeah.
No, each penny of personal property tax generates significantly less than the real estate property.
The real estate, personal property is $3 and some odd cents.
Yes, but I was saying each penny, that increase, if you're talking about how much we need to be increased, it would be a larger number than if you were looking at from a real estate property tax, so.
Ms. Han, do you know the answer? How much would we have to raise the personal property in order to make up?
Good evening. So I looked at this earlier this evening and based on the numbers for the current year, it would be approximately 25 cents for personal property taxes to be increased in order to make up the 700,000.
Thank you.
Ms. Bender, did you have something else?
I mean, there are other ways that we can collect the funds, correct? Is, you could use maybe, I, I'm just throwing it out there, maybe some from the cigarette tax fund, you know, there are other, it doesn't.
You are correct. You could use any revenue stream that is available.
Correct.
It would be identifying the revenue stream, though.
Because as one of, our vote from last week, we, we understand that rezoning the property, we will get a, a different revenue stream from the property being rezoned, so that could even be used. I mean, I've heard from a lot of people about repealing this decal fee and that it's a, it's a, an extra tax that needs to leave. So I think there's way, we don't, I don't think we have to raise the personal property tax to make it up just for this fiscal year.
But in the future years, you're going to have to raise something in order to fill in the hole. So the $25 is not really, I mean, Mr. Jones, you also make sure people pay tax when they get their sticker, right?
No, it's not a requirement.
Not a requirement?
It's part of the tax bill. So when you receive a tax bill, it's, it has the, the cost, the 325 per $100 of assessed value in the vehicle, and then $23 for every vehicle. It's $23, correct?
Twenty-five, right?
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three. And so the, it is on your bill. So it would be, yes, a matter of figuring out what revenue stream in order to fill that gap. So either A, you leave the, the decal or the, the fee in place, or you, you backfill it with some other revenue stream. Mr. Jones?
Just really quick, I've had some conversations with some of my colleagues. Someone mentioned earlier, and I apologize, I don't remember. But now that proration is on the table, we're going to be assessing vehicles at a higher rate in the beginning. So it stands to reason that the county will receive more income, so to speak.
It'd be 700,000?
In a half year, maybe not. But it, it does stand to reason. And that's according to most of my colleagues that I've talked to at other localities.
I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Jones. Did anyone else?
So can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
So, and I spoke to our county attorney about this just before the meeting. I would like to go ahead and move forward with the public hearing so that we have met the statutory requirement of having a public hearing. And then if need be, we have, maybe get some firm numbers. If there is a way that the commissioner's office could tell us how many vehicles approximately for the last two years, how many are coming in new to the county every month? We'll have some idea of how many new vehicles are coming in that could possibly generate a revenue stream through proration. I don't, I don't disagree with you, Mr. Jones. I'm sure you did do your homework and speak to, you know, other commissioners and treasurers, and I'm sure that once they start prorating, it is going to make up the difference in the revenue loss for the $23 per vehicle. But I would like to move forward with the public hearing if that's okay, because it is, it was scheduled, it was advertised, and then we close it. And if we want to take a little more time to gather some more data, then we, we don't move on it tonight, but we do hold the public hearing like we said we would.
Agreed.
Thank you.
I don't think there was ever, not going to move, to hold the public hearing, but that, yes, that's fair. Were there any other questions before we do open the floor for public, uh, public comment?
I was going to make a statement.
Okay, go ahead.
So that $25 equals out to $700,000, and we have the financial advisors here, and we have the school people here, and we're, we have plans for a new preschool. So, you know, we, we, we don't, we, we're not in really a position, I think, to be repealing that, but we'll go to the public hearing and see what happens.
Okay. In that case, I will open the floor now for public comment upon this public hearing. So if anyone would like to provide a comment, the floor is open.
Hi, my name is Aramaria Lobo, and I want to thank you, Mrs. Cupca and all of you. They agree, $25, $25 being charged in forever. If you have one, two, three, four cars, they charging $25 for each car. And also in the past, when you had a decal, they used to give you a paper. Also, you should save a lot of money because you stop giving those decals. They give you only one decal for, for, yeah, you give you one decal for, for household. But I would like that you give us something to, to the county, $25. You just been taking the money out all the time in taxes for building this, building that. It's okay, they pay to the fire department, to the police department, to the schools, but you need to stop spending. The county owns 190, 100,000, no, 100 million dollars. The county wasn't that poor. Now, how you going to pay that money? Try to pay that money first. Thank you.
Mr. Dines, do you have anyone online?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone receive correspondence to be entered into the record? Okay. Now we'll close the floor for public comment upon this public hearing and bring it back to the board for discussion.
Could you earmark that money towards the, what it will cost for the schools, for So instead of going, going in the general fund, we go for that debt payment?
You're talking about trying to get ahead of, because the financial advisor is going to be here to help us understand what would have to happen in order to finance a new preschool? Is that what you're trying, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, so the new preschool, there's a couple cents raised on tax revenue, real estate.
That's correct.
And so if we, I don't know if we can earmark this money for that or not. That, that was my first question.
Uh, I mean, it would be each, each board every year's prerogative on how to, I mean, it's not like you could force a, a future board to, to say that money is going to go towards that until you've started. You just, I mean, you have revenue streams, right? So.
Right. But I think that when, like Ms. Level comes up and speaks of the $25, $23 per vehicle, I haven't talked to her, but I think that she would be more inclined that that money was going towards a specific job like the preschool. But I can't speak from his level, but I'm just, um, I'm, I'm speaking for myself.
Okay.
I would be more inclined for that money to go for that type of project specifically.
Okay.
So it's not just a, a tax to tax. It's a tax for a product. Thank you.
If, if we still have reservations, I would like to see a more complete of how the revenue can be made up with maybe the increase in some properties on the, the taxes on it, the cigarette tax, and I'm talking about the rezoned land that now has a higher value. I would like to see the options that are available to make up that tax. Because I, I mentioned it in my board report earlier, we need to plan, and so that gives us time to plan, but just immediately earmarking it for one thing, we, we need to come up with a plan of what we're spending and what revenue streams we have for each thing that we're spending money on and the debt.
Okay.
There's been, when the new revenue stream from the data centers, you don't even know what it's going to be, if it is even going to be a revenue stream. It's kind of like the cigarette tax. It was told the, the board, I attended these meetings, that it was going to be seven, eight million dollars, and it's never panned out to that. It only panned out to about $3 million. So I, I wouldn't be inclined to even depend on that money until it goes up.
Now, I was not talking about the personal property tax. I was talking about rezoning the land from ag to industrial. It has a higher value. That's a given. That's not a not given. That's, that it has been rezoned, you will get more money. That's what I'm talking about. And then for the cigarette tax, some of you might remember way back when I said it's a sin tax. You're not going to, you're not going to get what you think you're getting, but we did pass it. So I'm not surprised we didn't get the revenue because a sin tax is designed to get you to stop using something, except for in Philadelphia where they still drink soda.
So is it, is it a sin to smoke cigarettes?
I didn't say it was a sin. That's just the, the title that's always given, a sin tax is on something you'd like to discourage people. So you try to make it a little higher so they discourage them, just like soda.
Mr. Chair?
Stand.
I have a motion, and it's not about pop or soda, because I'm from Pittsburgh, Ms. Bender. Mr. Chair, I move to direct staff to contact the Commissioner of the Revenues Office to request approximately two years of historical data on vehicles moving into the county as well as to direct appropriate staff, as the county administrator deems whoever appropriate, to present some alternative revenue streams that could address the difference in the revenue.
All right, that's a motion.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion, properly second it. Do we have any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Neopos, chair votes aye, motion carries. So we will bring this back and consider it again at a future date once we have some more information. So thank you. All right, we have our third public hearing. King George County Board of Supervisors will now hold a public hearing that will, was prop, has, that has been properly advertised to receive public input regarding transportation alternative program application. We'll first ask for the staff report. I will then open the floor for public comment. Public comments are limited to three minutes per speaker in order to afford everyone an opportunity to speak. Please state your name and address before your comment. Upon completion of public comment, I will bring the matter back to the board for consideration. The board may or may not take action tonight depending on the information received during public comment. Mr. Clark?
Good evening again. As mentioned earlier, something that GWRC has assisted us with, this year we screened in for the pre-application for a tourism, our transportation alternatives program funding. It's an 80/20 federal match program. Funding's allocated initially by juris, by size of jurisdiction, so we fall in the second category. Then any additional fundings that they have, they spread out amongst the Commonwealth, and you have to, most allocations are around $700,000. You can only maximum receive $1 million per year and $2 million total per project. But they're focused on community-based pedestrian and bicycle improvements, multimodal improvements. It's not funds that we can use for traditional roadways or anything like that. Everything's, runs through the Commonwealth Transportation Board, and we must have logical termini in independent utilities. So although we have a five-stage, five-phase plan, each phase has to have its own, makes sense by itself. So as I said, we got through the pre-application, submitted that in June, were screened in as of August 9th. Tonight is our public hearing. I also, so we closed the public hearing here tonight, but the community still has 10 days to respond, and I'll have that information at the end. So September 29th is actually the end of the public comment period. And then our full application is due into the smart portal by October 2nd. Oop, too far. Just to, for development, the King George Trailways Fusibility Study that we worked on in 2018 and the board approved in 2021, the Greenway Fusibility Plan, which was part of GWRC, the new courthouse bicycle and pedestrian plan that Ms. Eves presented to you all earlier in the year, and then the Ready, Set, Go project, all helped develop this project. So initially, it was four phases across from Presidential Lakes to Tinsblum Mill Lane, just beyond Social Services. Now we've added, RK&amp;K, who is the consultant with VDOT, recommended we start with a fifth phase, which is this sidewalk project. So I'm going to show it and tell everybody what we've got here. So it, you can see there's a light gray line there on, is there a pointer on here, Chris? All right. All right, so he's, so there above the parking spaces would be the start of the sidewalk, which is where the ADA crossing is for the school. It would come across and come down Dogger Road to the end there at the intersection at Route 3. There would be improvements to all three crosswalks there, and Mr. Beal and I discussed this this afternoon, and we're not, but neither one of us is sure how that's going to look, but it would be an adjustment of the stop bars and most likely the latter crosswalk that Ms. Eves described in our bicycle pedestrian plan for the area, which would be safer. There is no right-of-way that needs to be acquired, according to our preliminary things. Part of it there is on the school property, and I did not look today, and I meant to, whether that is actually the, who is the actual listed owner of that property, whether it's the county or it's the school board. But either way, I think that ease, getting that permission will be rather easy. And then the rest of it there is actually on public right-of-way already. There would be minimal changes to utilities with, it looks like that will be, those are out of the way. There would, may be an upgrade to the signal and, as I said, the crosswalk. And I just turned it off. So these numbers, VDOT has submitted, submitted to me yes, late yesterday, an updated cost estimate, which is the worst-case scenario, because as I talked to Mr. Beal and I talked to Ms. Lord, who's in the Fredericksburg office of VDOT, who oversees these programs, we don't want to be short in what we submit. So while these numbers look huge, it should be closer to what was actually, that actually shows in the board packet. That's our hope, because it's 400 feet of sidewalk. There is no right-of-way to acquire there. Very minimal utility issues that a lot of these things should be smaller, but the high end with inflation factor would be $1 million for the project, which I don't think, not, they don't think is anywhere near what it will cost, but we want to make sure we submit to get the right amount of funding. And then, so if it were that hot, the base dollar amount of 671,000, our match would be 3, 134,300, but every penny it comes down, then obviously our match comes down. Our steps is, tonight in your packet is a resolution of support that the board of supervisors, if they, if you don't enact that, enact, I stopped the, the process of submission. We have to have that. And then on Monday night, after we have that, it will go in front of GR, GWRC for that board's stamp of approval. As I said, the full, full applications due October 2nd. Commonwealth Transportation Board will then screen the applications and pick, select those in the spring, and it would become part of VDOT's six-year plan starting in June. We would either be funded in federal fiscal year '25 or '26, so that would start October 1, '24, '25. And it has a four, they have a four-year policy over these. So we have to have 50% plan review and the preliminary design done within two calendar years, right-of-way acquisition, and final plan review in three, and construction started within four. That, because of the scope of the project, those, I think we would be much further along by the time we got to year four and possibly already done. So as the public comes up, they can also speak tonight, they can submit mail to me here at the Rivercombe Building, 10459 Courthouse Drive, Suite 22, or Suite 200, I'm sorry, or they can email me at director@kgparks.org. That's my simple address, much easier than the typical county address. So if you have anybody who reaches out to you, director@kgparks.org would be the email.
So we have any questions for Mr. Clark before we open the floor for public comment? Okay, Mr. Clark, I appreciate the, the brief, but we will now open the floor for public comment upon this public hearing. Mr. Dines, do we have anyone online?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone receive correspondence in regards to this public hearing to be entered into the record? Okay. Then I will close the public hearing, and I will bring it back to the board for discussion and consideration. So, Mr. Clark, I'm going to ask you. So there is a local match to execute the project?
Yes, sir.
At this point, if we move forward with this, does this, does this obligate the county to obligate those dollars now, or is it something that the county would consider at a future date, whether to move forward or not?
The quick discussion with Ms. Hahn makes it sound like we could, we, we believe we could actually budget the dollars later.
Okay. Ask my colleagues if they have any other questions.
I, no, but I just want to make a statement, because I drive there, my daughter's in eighth grade, so I go to the middle school every day. And the amount of citizens, young and old, and people that are at the high school going over to get a snack before the football game, whatever, it is a dangerous area, and whatever we can to improve it, because if somebody got hurt, you know, and eventually, and that statistics show that could happen, that this at least would try to alleviate that. So it's an important-
Yes, I did, I did capture some pictures the other day, after this was, presentation was already done, of students crossing or preparing to cross as they're on their way to Sheets to get some, get a snack, I guess, before, you know, games or band practice or whatever. So those will go in with our submission.
I even see students going there in the morning, believe it or not, middle school students coming maybe from Presidential Lakes or over there. They walk and go.
Do we have any other discussion or questions?
Yes, Mr. Chair. So I agree with Ms. Bender, and it's not just high schoolers, it's middle schoolers who are jumping over to Sheets to get a bite to eat before, you know, a later game or whatever. And it's amazing, we haven't had a child fatality, a child pedestrian fatality there at that intersection at this point. I would also note, this is similar to how we do revenue sharing, where we don't obligate the match, we obligate it in future CIP, Capital Improvement Plans, and, and revenue sharing frankly is 50/50 match, if I'm not mistaken. And we've got the second phase of the turn lane project out there right now for the middle school. So I wouldn't have a problem moving forward with this. I just, I did want to have it heard here at our board level, because it was, it was brought to us, to Ms. Bender and I, at the last GWRC meeting, and they were ready to give us a resolution- resolution of support and everything. And I spoke up and said, no, we need to have our board have input because there is a local match required. So, but I'm willing to move forward with it, knowing that we don't obligate any funding right now. Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion?
I'll, I'll take a stab at the motion. So I make a motion to improve the go-ahead to submit the application for the transportation alternative program, proposed sidewalk from King George Middle School to the intersection of Kings Highway, Route 3 and Dogron Road, Route 206. Is that covered?
So I don't know if it's to submit, I think it's to prove the resolution in support of the project.
Correct, sir.
Friendly amendment. No, it's, I'm not trying to be critical. Okay. So there's a motion to approve the resolution in support of the project as presented. So there's a motion.
So I will second that.
Okay, so there's a second. So that is a motion to approve the resolution in support of the project as presented, and it's been properly seconded. Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 The opposed chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Clark.
Hope we all be back in the spring with good news.
Always like good news. All right. Just give me a moment. Believe we have King George County Schools reappropriation of budget for fiscal '22, '23? No. Yes. Ms. Sherry, Dr. Boyd.
Good morning, Chairman Granger. Good morning. Good afternoon. Goodness gracious. Good evening, members of board. I provided for you a handout this evening. I believe this is the last request for reappropriation for fiscal year '23. If you draw your attention to that handout, you'll see a summary section. Just quickly, King George County Schools request a reappropriation of $213,889.57 from the Technology and Instruction Administration categories to the category of Operation and Maintenance listed above or listed in the following handouts for year-end reconciliation. This request is being made to cover the utility bills in excess of anticipated amounts that have been received to reconcile the budget for Fund 250 for the King George County School General Operating Budget. Transfers are completed to ensure that no expenditure category is overspent prior to the annual, or the final annual audit and compilation of the annual comprehensive financial report. So I asked this evening for a motion to approve that reconciliation.
Thank you, Dr. Boyd. I'm just going to ask, so do you know what the genesis of those increases were, like what caused it to be a higher cost for, you said it was electricity?
It's just increased, yeah, electricity costs.
Okay. Has that been captured in this current year's budget properly, or do you anticipate there's going to be an overrun on that again this year?
I believe so, but as we've noticed even in our household budgets, the cost of utilities are going up, but I believe we've captured it as best we can in this upcoming budget cycle.
Okay. Mr. Collins, did you have a question?
Yes, sir. Dr. Boyd, I discussed this briefly before the meeting. The performance agreement with Honeywell was supposed to, that we would not have to, they would be on the hook to pay any differences, or that we would not be in a negative category. Could you check that out before we reappropriate or reappropriate with, I don't know?
So that has to deal with the, at the preschool only?
Nope.
No, it's the.
Whole place.
Vision. I don't, I don't know about the details of, you know, whether or not the utility costs would be leveled through the remainder of that contract. I can certainly look into it.
Well, the contract was that the, that they, the school division would not take on any more increased bills, that Honeywell will take up that from their profits according to the agreement. Supposed to be a 25-year agreement on that.
Okay.
So that was one of the big deals.
I remember that. If, and I don't remember the exact language and if, whether it would qualify or not, but I wouldn't mind if we did go back to look, just to verify.
I certainly can.
I just have a quick question. How does that affect your audit, since this has to be reconciled?
So that might be a Donna question. I believe we're kind of in crunch time for that, correct?
Good evening again. So our audit, our auditors were on site last week, and they've completed most of their field work, and we're trying to wrap up some of the items. As you all know, our financial system, we cannot close out last fiscal year until that audit is complete. So this is one thing that could hold that up. But also, the electric bills have already been paid, so we could look into the performance agreement with Honeywell, and if that is the case, we could have a refund from them, and then that would come back into the general fund balance.
Okay. So you're asking to still move it from one account to the other to cover the, the audit purposes, and then we will continue to pull the thread to see if they would refund and provide that back?
So when would we have that information?
We can, we can go back and, because I don't have that performance agreement, it's probably in the, I'm not sure if.
I can take a look at it as early as tomorrow, and I'll reach out to Honeywell and see if we can get with Joyce from Honeywell.
Okay.
And then provide that as in terms of.
Yeah, if you need our assistance, we can.
We'll have an answer.
Can get with.
Within seven days or so.
I certainly hope so. I'll work in that fashion. It is, I work with Honeywell, and they've been pretty responsive to me up to this point, so certainly do what I can to make sure that we follow that timeline.
That'd be great. But can we get a, you know, a complex answer? In other words, not a no or a yes, but.
Well, if it's yes, do you need it complex? Like if it's yes, they're going to get the money back? Are you fine with them just saying, yeah, we will?
It won't be that complex.
If it's a no, though, you want to understand that.
No, Honeywell, you know, it's, it's going to be a no ever before, so yes.
Mr. Chair, may I ask Ms. Hahn, if, if it was found out that Honeywell was responsible for that, would the board need to take an action to get the rebate or to get the refund?
The school board likely.
More than likely the school board, but it depends on what the performance agreement says. If it's in that agreement, we wouldn't have to take action. They would just, we just need to tell them, you know, that they need to refund the money.
We can have a report back to you for sure. If Dr. Boyd gets information, he can forward it to me and we can then forward it on to you, or if it's something that needs to have a report at the next board meeting, then we could have that as well.
Okay. So we can continue to pull that thread and get that information, but I think it's probably still be us to move forward from a auditing perspective, just to make sure that we have our ducks in a row, and hopefully we'll get that money back.
Sounds good.
Mr. Chair, I have a motion.
Say it.
I move to approve the King George County School Board's request to reappropriate a total of $213,889.57 from the Technology 68100 Department Code and Instruction Category 61100 Department Code to the Operations/Maintenance Department Code 64200 as identified in the presentation.
Second.
Motion properly seconded. Do we have any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 The opposed chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Boyd. All right, we'll move on to the county attorney, resolution for school and fire financing. Ms. Lackey?
So I'll kick this one off, but we have both bond counsel and financial advisors here available to answer any subject matter expert questions. But you will recall that there was a presentation about bond financing for the preschool and fire station projects at the August 1st meeting by Davenport and Company. There's a proposed resolution in your agenda packet that would authorize a bond issuance by the EDA. So the EDA would actually be the issuer, not the county, and the amount of 22.5 million. There was a, a change to the resolution, so you'll notice your board packet in the board report, it says a bond issuance of 20, 21 million, but the final amount is expected to be 22.5 million. If you have any questions, you can direct that to the, to the, to the folks who are more knowledgeable on that than I am. In order to proceed with this, the EDA will conduct a public hearing on October 12th. If financing is recommended by the EDA and approved by this board, the county would pledge its moral obligation to repay the funds secured by the bonds. And I defer to the bond counsel and financial advisors if there are additional substantive questions.
Gentlemen, did you have anything else further to present, or? Okay. I appreciate you being here, though, for answering questions. Does anyone have any questions? We'll start with Ms. Bender.
I do have questions. First off, this is not for the full amount, correct, for either a fire station or a preschool?
I think it would cover the cost of one of them at least, and part of the another. Is that a correct assessment? You guys can come up if.
Well, my question is, we haven't even seen the finalized preschool study. So, Mr. Miller, where is it?
So Davenport's presentation back in August, it was, the recommendation that they had was that you break this up over two cycles, and they felt that was the best for the debt structure of the county. We are still waiting on the report from Mosley. It is supposed to be towards the end of this month, so I would anticipate at any time we'll know a better idea of what the cost of the preschool will be. And, but I don't know that that limits you from going forward. Ultimately, they'll need that information, obviously. But at this point, I think to keep on track and to keep this project moving, which is at the urging of the, of the board, I think we, you know, you all agreed to this timeline.
Well, my concern is, we don't know what the final cost is. So the other concern is there, there possibly could be another option of looking at, that property is very unique. I've walked that property, I walked it with one of the school board members, I walked it with our county engineer. We need to make sure that we can fit everything that we want to put on that. And so my concern is rushing this without looking at everything. I know it is important to get the preschool students out. There could other option, we maybe could lease this space for a little while, you know, so that we could do the proper planning, so that we take the taxpayers' money and use it wisely. And that's the taxpayers that'll be in the preschool also, because they will be, hopefully, future taxpayers. But I want to make sure that, you know, if we do this fund, that if there's another option, we could use that, you know, the fund that doesn't lock you into one plan.
So again, I'm David Rose with Davenport, and my colleague is Austin Sachs. Kyle Augs works with us as well. To your question, I think this hopefully will give you some comfort. We talked about an overall expectation of about $42 million over two parts. We also discussed the fact that we really don't know if we may be getting some grants or some other dollars. So as a result, the way in which we're anticipating borrowing this first tranche of money, if you would, is it's very flexible. It can go to one project, it can go to both projects, but it doesn't necessarily speak to being on a certain plot of land. So from that perspective, think of it this way, we are basically borrowing money with your blessing. We're going to reinvest that money as we spend it down, equal to the cost of the money. So we will not have any, if you would, carrying costs while we're waiting to actually put those monies to work. That's important. So to your point, what we really want to do now is borrow some of that money while interest rates are very favorable. The Federal Reserve is talking about raising rates, maybe not tomorrow, but over the next period of time, they may lower rates. And so if they do, let's say, the point is, we want to lock in money while it's favorable, but if rates go down over the next year or two, that second tranche of money, then ideally we'll borrow that money at lower rates. No matter what we do, we're going to have the ability to refinance this, not immediately, but over time. And I have been in front of you before, where we've literally refinanced, if not everything, close to everything we've ever borrowed in King George County, because over time, you just basically see rates either come down, you get a shorter period to refinance. So there's a lot of points here that make sense. But I did want to, to your point, whether it's on this side or something like that, that's not going to be in any way constraining for the money that we borrow.
So maybe I can look at it as, you know, for the service authority, the amount of money we had in reserve, I think it was at 15.9, it could be, we get the money and then it could be paid down in a certain fashion, correct, or spent in a certain fashion?
Yes.
So it is not technically earmarked, earmarked for an exact plan?
It will not be earmarked for an exact plan. That's why Mr. Bausch is here as bond counsel, but it will be basically set up in such a way that those two projects are, you know, or those multiple projects are contemplated in a basket, if you would, of capital needs. Would you agree with that, Jesse?
Yeah. Jesse Bausch, Bond Counsel with Sanz Anderson. If you look at the resolution, what it does is identifies those two projects, but what it says is one or more county or school capital projects, including but not limited to those projects.
Right.
So if there's some other way, or some other way that we want to use that money, we have that flexibility, as long as it's a county or school capital project.
And why I ask that, say it came back with a plan and we were able to put the school board office on top, it would not limit that, correct? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Collins?
So I have two things. First, what, what, why is it another million dollars?
Oh, okay. So what we ask for is what we call a not-to-exceed amount, Mr. Collins. So when you go into the world of bond financing, what we're going to do is make sure that we have $21 million of what we call proceeds, hard dollars to be invested or reinvested. That may be a little larger size issue. It may actually be less than 21 million, because the way bonds are done, we're going to put this out, we call a public sale, we've done this before with you. Some people want to buy a bond at a discount, which means basically we would actually borrow some more money, go into that 22 or so. Some people want to buy bonds at a premium, which means they'll give us more than 21 million. So ultimately, it doesn't matter to us, as long as the resolution allows it. All we care about for you is that we end up having, at the end of the closing, $21 million to be invested or to be, again, spent for multiple projects. That's the way it works.
Okay. The second thing is, Ms. Bender, to slow the project down, the, it's been pretty slow. It's been 30 years. So I think that's slow enough. I am concerned about the 21 million, since it is the most favorable probably then we'll have in another five years for rates. I would think that it would be more advantageous to get the larger amount, because we know it's going to cost in the range of $40 million. So the $21 million, I know will get it started, but, you know, if we're, if we're going to do it, we need to do it all the way. People need to know, you know, I'm not a big guy on raising taxes, but I'm, I'm in on this one. And we need to do the whole project, the fire station and the preschool, no matter where it's going to be. We need to get that financing set and go ahead and move forward.
Again, I, I understand that. We don't have a crystal ball. I have no sense if rates are going to go up or down. And even if I had a Nobel Prize in Economics, as you could tell I do not, they still make mistakes. They don't really know. So our thinking is, we know with certainty that we need absolutely at least 21 million, a lot more than that. So our thinking is, why don't we lock in what we know at the very minimum is a start, 50% thereabouts? We don't want to overborrow. Yes, we could pay it back, but there's some penalties to that if we went up to that 40, 41, 42 million amount. We know there may be some other offsetting dollars. The other thing, though, and Mr. Bausch can chime in here, it has to do with being able to borrow on a tax-exempt basis, so, and you correct me, because you're the, you're the expert, but I've been doing this for 40-plus years at your partners. We have to have reasonable expectations that the money we borrow will spend 85% of that, effectively all of that, in three, in three years, 36 months. I'm not sure we can meet that, that, if you want to call it, that criteria. Yes, there's some waivers to move it longer, but I just think it's, it's, it's better cash flow-wise if we kind of put it into. But I just think it's, it's, it's better cash flow wise if we kind of put it into sort of two pots, if you would. Now, if rates go down markedly a year from now, or six months from now, could we come back and say, look, it's especially attractive? We might do that, Mr. Collins. At the same time, if rates go up, you know, considerably between now and the time we need the net, the next amount, it's possible we borrow that a little differently. We may borrow that on a more short-term basis, so that we have the money, but we don't lock into long-term if rates pop up, and we hopefully don't see that happening. So, that's really, there's no right or wrong here. But as you said, we know there's going to be an equivalent tax impact. We showed that the last time. That was that two, two, and two strategy. And so, from our perspective, this is the closest to sort of doing that, if we, if we find that. We also have estimated the interest rate for both the 21 and the second 21 is higher than it is for the moment. So, hopefully, we'll get that benefit. But that, again, can go away from us. So, I, I hear you. We'll do whatever this board ultimately decides. But we just would like to see it maybe broken into two parts. It's not absolute science.
Well, I thank you for that financial advice. So, what, the $21 million, $7 million for the fire station approximately, and the other 14 for the school, which is basically engineering and so forth. So, at the end of that period, and it gets engineered and so forth, the fire station is going to get built. And then, how about a board decides not to go forward with the plan? So, that's why I'm talking about locking it in. So, hey, they basically have to go forward with the plan.
I think maybe I'll defer to the, to the county administrator for that.
So, I believe that the, the fire station estimate at this time is, is like around 14 million, the fire station is. And I think what the hope was, is that the other amount, there whatever's left over after the fire station. I know that they tried to get a grant, and they did not get that grant. I think I reported that. But you would begin the process, like you mentioned, of working with the engineers, working with the, you know, doing the design for the preschool. And then, that other tranche would come along and fund the rest of it. I mean, that's, that's the intent, is my understanding. And I believe there's also a reason for the breaking it up, because of the way it would lay across the financials and what our current debt load is. And, and so, the larger the debt that you take out, is going to impact the borrowing ability of the county immediately. And I think that's why you guys are recommending that.
That's right. So, we have, as you know, we presented the last time, you have certain financial policies. And we've always been within those white lines. And that would be, again, keeping us in that, in that mode. That's, that's our thinking as well, Mr. Collins. But, again, financially, we just think this is the prudent course of action. Just because you, let's say, we're to do the opposite. You borrowed all 42 million right now, put that aside for the moment, what, you know, Mr. Miller said. The reality is, you could always stop a project. I mean, that's just because the money's been borrowed, doesn't mean you have to go forward with that project. I mean, that's something that a board can do. It wouldn't look particularly good. It might have some other ramifications, but just make no mistake. And then, the flip side is if you borrow this 21, as you said, Mr. Miller, most of that's going to go to the fire station. The other gets going on the preschool. And then, if you decide not to move forward, you know, again, we've, we've got, still got to pay that back. So, you know, there's no right or wrong to any of this. This is really y'all's choice. But I think with Mr. Miller, we spent a lot of time. What I think you need to know, though, is the way we've set this up, nobody will see the projects being delayed in terms of actual construction and then opening. That's important to point out. We're not slowing down the timetable of getting these projects done. I think that's, that's important to, to point out. We know what that is.
I wouldn't want to see, you know, the 21 million and get the preschool, you know, engineered, and then it takes another 30 years to build it, you know, because we've been a long, long time. So, that's just my opinion and my viewpoint.
Mr. Chair, may I ask a question of counsel? Thank you. Ms. Lackey, if I'm reading the resolution correctly, the only motion required is adoption of said resolution, because all of the other documents are incorporated by, by reference in the resolution?
That's correct. So, the resolution designates and designate a sign the other documents as they become finalized through the issuance process.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a motion. I move adoption of the resolution of the Board of Supervisors of the County of King George, Virginia, approving public facility revenue bond issuance, offer and sale for school and public safety facilities as presented.
Second.
Your motion properly seconded. Do we have any further discussion? On favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. All right. We have Mr. Minor. For the Defense and Technology Zone Incentive Ordinances. You brought him to us a couple times, and I think at this point, we're looking to advertise a public hearing, because we've held the town hall. I apologize, I'll let you present.
No, that's perfectly fine. Good evening, Chairman Granger and members of the board. This is the same presentation that I gave at the last meeting. I do have, I do have an update. I did provide a presentation to the.
Do you mind if we take a five-minute recess before we move on? I apologize. Okay, yeah, we'll take a five-minute recess. We'll come back. Thank you. Mr. Dines, are we? We're good? We're good? All right, then we are back from recess. I appreciate everyone's patience. And, again, Mr. Minor?
Yes, thank you, Chairman Granger. So, just to report back, I did conduct a town hall last Thursday. It was pretty well attended. There wasn't much feedback. I did get email correspondence from a resident that did recommend, wanted, made the recommendation to remove data centers from the tech ordinance. But I'm happy to go through the presentation. The board has seen his presentation at least twice. But I'm happy to go through it again, whether for the public benefit or for the board benefit. But just, just wanted to report back on that town hall.
So, I'll ask my colleagues, do you want Mr. Minor to provide the brief again? Okay. I know, I think we've had it three times. And, and so, then, I think the fourth was the, the town hall. I'm just asking. So, okay.
Happy to take any questions from the board.
Okay, we'll start Ms. Bender.
And I apologize for not being to the meeting last week. My daughter got hurt at the basketball game, so I did not leave the basketball game, because. But, um, one of the things I would like to remove data center from the ordinance, and it's because we haven't even seen the ones we have in Planet, and I don't want to incentivize more to come before we make sure that we have everything in place. And I say that from listening to developers on those state committees. The one thing they like is certainty. So, I don't want to advertise something if a board or a future board is not going to have, want to consider it in these other areas that you have a map. And it might be good if we at least just put the map up, so people can see what we're referencing.
Of course, I have to click all the way through this. So, this, so just to point this out, this is all the settlement areas within the county. The only ones that we're targeting is the Dahlgren District. Thanks, Chris. The Claydale Properties, 3 and 301, the, and the Route 3 West Settlement Area. So, Ms. Bender, if I can, just make a comment really quick. So, I completely understand, and this is just to advise the board. Data centers cannot just go anywhere. They're going to follow major power lines in order to get power. So, there's only, in my opinion, at this, at this time, I'm not sure what future boards would do or what other economic developer directors would do. But the only property that I would advise, or properties that I would advise a data center to go towards, is obviously the Taylor Farm, which I believe is under contract, and there's a proposal for it. And then, the Claydale Property, where the 230 KV line that feeds Dahlgren goes through. The other properties within the county are not necessarily suitable. And I don't think I would advise a developer to chase those properties without board approval.
I just want to be consistent, so that I have consistency. Because I do have definitely, not the area where the industrial park is, is the Edgehill Office Hill area. I have a concern with the area where the businesses are, because there is that big tension line, I know.
Understood. Oh, I just.
That area pretty well. So, that's why I'm concerned about that, that, you know, because that would definitely.
Can you zoom in for me?
Need some more public feedback, for especially the residents that live in.
So, your, your 230 KV, ma'am, I'm just going to draw like a little quick line here. It goes basically like this, and then it splits down this way. So, I don't think that, I don't think that any of that 230 KV really falls within any of the settlement areas, except for these two properties here, this.
No, it's right there in the edge, on the edge hill, because I know, because my house is in that area, and it's, the power line comes right in the front.
Comes right here, and then splits down that way. Okay.
And then, it crosses the road near the Claydale Property.
Understood.
That's where my heartburn comes, in that area. And then, one other, looking at all the ordinances, I think it's page four, where it talks about the economic incentives and, and, I think that's page, no, no, wait a minute. Whichever page that had the $1 million, is, is that too small of an amount to kick in for incentives? Because I'm thinking of something like Amazon, that's awfully a small number.
So, correct. So, if we're, if we're going to attract data centers, $1 million is not a good starting point. So, I think the, the point I'm trying to make with this is that I'm not interested in necessarily attracting data centers with this ordinance, so to speak, right? I'm trying to open it up to all industries, data centers included. But the threshold is set more so for your small to medium-sized tech and defense contractor businesses. So, $1 million to a data center is nothing. They'll spend that in a week on site work, right? But for your small businesses that want to expand in an office park, or expand on a, on a C2 parcel, 500 grand or a million dollars is a lot of money. So, for that, that threshold, because it's a qualifying ordinance, just because we drew these boundaries, doesn't mean that they automatically get it as soon as they start investing money. It's a discretionary incentive, which means that it has to go before the board for approval, before any incentive is provided to them. The process is, if they're inside of the zone, they submit an application to my department for review and analysis. And then, I bring that before the board for final approval with a recommendation for incentives, based off of the, the amount of jobs they're going to create and the amount of investment they're going to bring to the community. So, they have to qualify first by being within. They have to qualify again with the capital investment that they'll make, that 500 to 1 million. And then, they have to get final approval from the board.
And I appreciate for your explaining that. It's just, I still have heartburn about the data center part being in there. But, and the other question I have is, with the area that already is going to have a data campus, does that add extra incentives on to that?
No, ma'am. This is not a layered incentive. Honestly, it's, it's, it's a qualifier. So, they can't get whatever, whatever agreement that we have, they're not going to get additional incentives, just because they're within it. It just, it would qualify the next business that's within the industrial park. So, let's say Greenship were to expand in the future, and they fell under that. Let's say they were going to expand because they won a government contract. And so, they would fall under the, the defense production zone. This would be more geared towards them than an Amazon, or Google, or Microsoft. Those deals are so massive, they have to be negotiated on a whole nother level, rather than.
Well, I appreciate you clarifying that. I just still, I would like to take data center out, but that's my opinion.
The pleasure of the board.
Do we have any other discussion or questions?
So.
Mr. Collins?
Go to a public hearing.
For the public hearing, correct?
Correct. This would, this would be us directing staff to advertise for a public hearing. Either the third or yeah, the 17th or something like that.
Hopefully the 17th. I would be in the same realm as Bender is to remove the data centers. But we'll let the public weigh in on that.
Mr. Chair, a motion.
Go ahead.
I move to direct staff to advertise the required public hearings for the economic incentive ordinances.
What date would we like to look for that? I'm going to ask if we could push it to the second meeting in October if everyone is amenable to that. Okay, Mr. Stonehill, are you?
I was just going to second.
Okay, I apologize. So we have a motion properly seconded and we are looking for the second meeting in October, truly the 17th. Okay, we have a motion properly seconded. Do we have any further discussion?
The only thing I want to say, I want to make a statement that I'm going to vote aye for this, but I would like data centers removed. So I, I'm voting aye to make it, to let it go to a public hearing so that the public can weigh in also.
Thank you, Mrs. Bender. Any other comments or discussion?
Just going to have the same call.
That's fine.
Thank you.
Fair enough. Thank you. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Miner.
Thank you.
All right, we have a change order for the pneumatic tube station not included in the C Mar for the new courthouse. Mr. Mason?
Good evening.
Good evening.
We do have a change order request. We were hoping that we'd get through the whole project without one, but we haven't. We included in the original project tubes going from the courtrooms to the offices in each floor. What we didn't think about, and I think it's probably because we're all on the first floor now where we are, is getting them from the offices of the courtroom down to the sheriff's department for the transportation through. And we're requesting that $60,000 be transferred from the contingency to the construction project. And I'd be glad to try to answer any questions. I can't tell you I will, but I'll give it a try.
Mr. Mason, I appreciate you being here and I appreciate, my first question is going to be, obviously as a C Mar, the only things that would be, change orders would be things that we didn't include. So I was going to ask why this might have occurred. And so I appreciate you getting ahead of that and providing that information about the current setup. And obviously that's not the desired way to go, but it's where we're at at this moment. And so let me ask this then, what kind of impact would it be if it were not in place?
Then we would have to carry papers from the third floor or the second floor down to the basement physically. And it would increase a lot of staff time. I think in the long run, it's going to be a very good investment because of the efficiency we'll create.
Okay, I appreciate that information. I'll let my colleagues ask any of the questions they might have though. Mr. Stonehill?
Thank you for coming out, Mr. Mason.
Always a pleasure.
Too bad we hadn't, he had better news for us, but. So this is going to be just, you said to the sheriff's office is actually going from the courthouse to sheriff's office or just downstairs? Okay, so it's going to stay inside of the building?
Yes, it's a tube that will remain in that building. It'll be additional one. It won't be. We didn't remember the tubes. We didn't remember to think about the ones that we didn't have that we would need when we went from one floor to three stories.
Hopefully it'll work better than the one at the sheriff's office now. Yes. So it's just going to go throughout the building. So you didn't plan on any of that in the beginning?
We planned on the, from the courtroom to the offices in each court, juvenile, general district and circuit. But we did not consider how we were going to get the paper from those offices of those courtrooms down to the sheriff's department for the transportation, back to Rappahannock Regional Jail or wherever they were going. Because again, right now we just walk out the office right around the corner and hand it to them.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mason.
Mr. Chair, I move to authorize the county administrator to transfer $60,000 from the project contingency to project construction for the new courthouse.
Second.
All right, we have a motion properly seconded. Do we have any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Mason. All right, I think that was the last of our action items. So we'll move on to county administration for it. Mr. Miller?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So we're pulling that up. There's a couple of items on here. One that I will just tell you, capital projects update for the to-do list, there's no real update. So you do have it at your desk, I believe, but it, there's really no change in some of these. The other items on here is first of all, a reminder that you have a board of directors meeting, a joint meeting with the board of directors on the 21st. That's Thursday here in the boardroom. Also a reminder that next Tuesday, you have a joint meeting with the planning commission on the second, the second meeting with the Berkeley group on your zoning overhaul. And I believe that's at six as well. Is that correct, Ms. Fish? Okay. The other item, there's two other items. Actually, yes, there's, I'm going to add another item. But one is employee anniversaries, which is on the very back page. And you can see the various employees and their levels of service to the county. And the next item that we have is we have, we have Ms. Southall is here and she's going to give you an update on the branding effort that she's coordinating.
Good evening, members of the board. So you'll find in your agenda packet, a brief update on where we are in the process. The main purpose of which is to update you that we will be sending two logo concepts and two tagline options for public vote starting tomorrow and will be ending on October 1st. And I will come back to present everything that went on through this entire process during the October 3rd meeting. So I open this to any questions that you have about the process.
So I don't want to really talk about the process, but I do want to talk about the logo concept one and two. So King George is known for its colors, the dark blue and the yellow. And it, these two things don't, don't mean King George to be recognized. When I would pull up a piece of paper that says King George, everybody recognizes our colors. So I'm, I'm not in favor of either one of these for that reason. If you could change all that stuff to our colors, it would be much more appetizing.
Truly noted. These are just concepts right now. I haven't been able to have my own hands on them yet. Basically, everything is inspired from the survey, didn't think of the word for a second, inspired by the survey we sent out in May. And this is what the public did respond with, that we are nature-based. So I can give you options once I have hands on it for you guys to see what it looks like. But we did play around with those colors and having the traditional colors you see behind you on the seal with this new concept with nature-based, that basically is what the public responded with. It does look quite different than what you, you would think your eye would, would want to see for nature. But I am open if that is a consensus of the board to give you that option when I present for the branding part. So next time we'll just be adopting the concept and I can come back with whatever direction you guys have for that concept or whatever consensus you would like to see with options on the branding side.
Ms. Southall, understanding this is, a lot of localities are doing this. Is there, this is our traditional look and it's very official. So this is a different way to put King George out there and just have the official seal be used for official documents. Is that correct? So it could look different because of that.
Yes, correct. And in my presentation for the next meeting, I will go over other entities that we are familiar with, that you see day to day, that do have logos and seals and how different those look and those colors and options and how that is, is different to the eye and why those are in, in place for, for different organizations.
Because I have to, I have to disagree with Mr. Collins. I, I like these. But I could see how the KGBA, maybe the VA could have the traditional colors in it. Since it's just the blue, it could have those built in. But I like the land between two rivers because that's what people remember. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Southall, thank you very much for your work on this. And I was going to ask you, but Ms. Bender brought it out just now that there is a difference between a seal and a logo and you mentioned that in your board report here. So we would still continue to use the official seal for board resolutions, any official documents that we, that require board action. But then this is, yeah, more of a marketing tool.
Correct, that is correct. So the purpose of a seal is to commemorate your past where you were founded, your foundation, and to continue to use that on things like you mentioned, resolutions, legal documents. So that will be continued to be used and that can be consensus of the board as well to be, continue to be used on agenda items and minutes if that's considered what you guys want to be the official. But what the logo will be for the identity of who we are today and the way that our community identifies ourselves, which was the purpose of the survey in May was to get that, that overview of how everybody feels about who King George is today. And so that's what inspired the logo concepts as well as the taglines. And I'll go into depth and provide you with all of the information that we had from that survey. The survey results, the overview is available online on our website right now and the link is in the memo. But the exact responses that were provided from everybody will be in the overview that I have on October 3rd.
I agree with Ms. Bender. I really like what's been developed here. I'm not sure which one I favor more right now, one or two, but I like the direction. While we still honor our history and maintain use of the official seal for official documents, I think this is a fresh path forward. Yeah, thank you.
I wasn't talking about the seal whatsoever, so I don't even know how that got into the discussion. I'm talking about the logo. So I'm still on board with what I said about the logo. I had, the seal is going to stay the same no matter what. I'm just talking about the logo. Thank you.
Do we have any other questions from Ms. Savo? All right, thank you so much for coming out and briefing us on, on the concepts.
Of course, I'll see you guys again on October 3rd.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Oh, I just have two more items. Well, actually three, excuse me. You need to, we need to nominate or approve of the nomination of Natasha Cheek to be appointed to the King George CPMT as an alternate representative for the court services unit. And this is from Ms. Kabuchi. So I would need a motion to nominate.
So moved, second.
All right, we have a motion properly seconded. Do we have any discussion on this nomination? Or appointment, I'm sorry. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed chair votes aye, motion carries.
And then I have a second request from Ms. Kabuchi to nominate Ms. Melissa Ware to be appointed as a alternate representative to the King George schools as an alternate for the CM, CPMT.
So moved, second.
We have a motion properly seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed chair votes aye, motion carries.
The only other item I, I would ask is, is Mr. Messler, he didn't know this, but just to give us an update on where we are with the community development director search. As you know, that we've had that open and also let you know that there has been some turnover or there will be some complete turnover here this Friday. We lost one permit tech and then we're losing another one on Friday. Both situations are kind of lifestyle changes. And I don't know that there was much we could do to get, to help keep them there. One is going back, one who's leaving on this Friday is going back to Kansas where she is, has family and has she has lived most of her life. And, and then the other employee, Ms. Colley, was commuting in over an hour one way and has now an opportunity that she went to work for the city of Tappahannock or the town of Tappahannock. And so he's closer. And so Derek's crew is moving very quickly to fill those positions so that we can continue services. But I'll let you update them on the director search.
Yeah, and the permit texts should be filled hopefully by, excuse me, filled by the end of this week. So we've had some good interviews on that and hopefully get that filled. The director search has been going on since mid-July and we've been advertising it throughout the state. LinkedIn, get a national audience on it. We've had some response to that. Responses have not been overwhelming, which is not unlike a search of this for a director role. We do have one internal applicant from our current community development office currently. But we are still trying to push the information out to see if we can't get a better applicant pool. Currently, the applicant pool does not have experience and expertise plus leadership skills that we're looking for, for that role. So it is something that we're diligently working on and trying to create a better applicant pool so that we can have some potential options for that role.
Does anyone have any question for, questions for Mr. Messler? Okay, thanks, sir. Okay, Mr. Miller, did you have any, Mr. Collins, I think I had a question. I think you, that was your last item?
No, it wasn't a question. I needed to make a motion for an appointment.
Oh, just to make sure. Mr. Miller, did you have anything else?
That is it.
Okay, Mr. Collins?
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Roger Nicely to the planning commission for the James Monroe District.
I'll second.
We have a motion properly seconded. Do we have any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed chair, any opposed chair votes aye, motion carries. Mr. Collins, do you have anything else?
Mr. Miller could reach out to Mr. Nicely. I don't have his contact information. Ms. Bender might.
Yes, sir, we will take care of that. Thank you.
And Mr. Miller, he's on the Parks and Rec Advisory Council, so you can get that from Mr. Clark.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay. In that case, I do believe we have a closed session.
I move that the King George County Board of Supervisors convene to closed session for number one, proposed local incentive package for major economic development project pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.23711A6 for discussion and consideration of investment of public funds where competition or bargaining is involved, where if made public initially, the financial interest of the county would be affected in specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.237118. And number two, consultation and briefing with legal counsel pertaining to actual or probable litigation and other legal consultation related to status of landfill host agreement negotiations pursuant to Virginia Code Sections 2.237117 and 2.237118. And number three, closed session pursuant to State Code Section 2.23711A1 for the discussion and consideration of the performance and compensation of the county administrator. I invite the county administrator, county attorney, director of solid waste and recycling and director of economic development and tourism as needed because they are deemed necessary and/or their presence will reasonably aid the board in its consideration of one or more topics to be discussed pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.23712F.
Second.
Motion properly seconded. Do we have any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. We are in closed session.
I move that the King George County Board of Supervisors return to public meeting and certify by vote that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered during the closed meeting.
Second.
No motion, probably second. Do we have any discussion? We will certify by roll call. Ms. Bender.
So certify.
Mr. Collins.
So certify.
Ms. Cupca.
So certify.
Mr. Stonehill.
So certify.
So certifies. We're back in open session. Do we have any other business to bring before the board? If not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn until Thursday, September 21st at 6:00 p.m. in the boardroom.
I will make a motion to adjourn until Thursday, September 21st, 2023, at 6:00 p.m., and then Robert Holmes, boardroom.
Second.
Motion, probably second. Do we have any discussion? On favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We're adjourned.